There you go.
Check the minutes. You're spot two? Yes. She said that one. She just. She knows her. Are you sure about that?
I'll take it out of my glass. I'll take it out of my head.
I want to say. If we go there, I'd like to. I don't want to. Everybody away. It was very. Had a few. Yeah. That one for us.
I was very.
I was feeling. Yeah.
I'm. I'm.
Okay, I'm just.
We got. Yeah. I like how they. All right. Excuse me. Did I invite you? But.
I was like. First thing you proved that you saw. We were not. I think that you sure thought. I am. I'm going with the assumption that you. You. Probably. For. For five. As you. You're. Yes. If we honestly. Something.
Like, I don't know. Here's your.
And. I don't know. Kind of like.
Yeah.
You know, I want.
I didn't get.
You know. I'm. I got this wrong. So I had.
Yeah.
That's kidding. I tell. That takes some balls. Oh, yeah. They kind of admire me now.
Washington.
About. I mean. I can tell. Like the language they say. Okay, so if I got there, so you all. I don't do it. I always take. But when they challenge it, that's only. Tell them. I don't want to. I don't want to. I don't want to.
Yeah.
You have their. You can. Well, I need you to help me. Where. To check. Go. Go. They. To the. Justin. Yes.
Good evening. Good evening. Six thirty one. Last seven. The council meeting. Glad to have you all here.
Uh. Don't have any really opening remarks other than if you have a phone with you, try to turn those off down or silence them if you want, if you choose to. So that's about it.
What's that?
So. Once again, thank you all for coming, but if you would and you're able to, would you please stand and say the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and truly promote what stands one nation under God and individual with their reading just as for all.
Okay. I just want to remind everyone that we, I'm sure you're aware of it, we had some sad news in the community today. And if your children or yourselves maybe attended Oldham County High School, the band director Brad Rogers passed away while over in Europe with quite a big load of U of L. Things, U of L students, they were there on a two or three week mission. I don't know what it actually was about, but. Brad was a forty year person who's great music teacher at Oldham County High School for forty years. And he's also the gentleman who led every Oldham County. Memorial Day service, any service that they had with the community band here in Oldham County. Brad was the band director, always taking his time as volunteer to help then put on a great program for, I saw him down at the Memorial Day event down at South Omen High School just a few months ago. So let's just keep Brad and his family in our prayers. If you didn't know Brad, you missed a great person. He was awesome and he touched so many kids' lives at Oldham County High School. I do know that. Okay, with that being said, Heather, our city clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yeah. Latasha.
Here.
Lucy.
Chair.
Jason Kinther.
Here.
Jason Taylor.
Here.
Joe Davenport.
Chair.
Kenneth Powell.
Here.
Trey Kama.
Here.
And Laura Taylor.
Here.
Okay, we have eight members of the council present, so with that being said, we'll call the meeting to order. You have approval of your agenda for tonight's meeting. Is everyone okay with the agenda that you received in the mail on Friday? Heather just whispered into my ear, we're gonna add a couple, so Beech, you have something to add, sir? For somebody that has something to add?
We, we have an ordinance to add.
Excuse me?
We have an ordinance to add.
Okay.
Regarding the entertainment exemption, it's a modification of the ordinance that we passed very recently.
Okay, where would you like to place that on agenda, Laura? Along eleven or twelve or somewhere in there?
Yeah, that's fine. Where we.
Okay, let's, let's just go with it after item eleven. Let's make it.
Number twelve.
Eleven, eleven A, eleven A, we'd like to, okay? Is there any other additions to the agenda tonight?
There's gonna be a resolution. Did you get that on there? A resolution and municipal order regarding. EDC map, the like to be entertainment destination center map, slight correction on some of the lines.
Okay, Mr. Craig Mall, you'd like to add that to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll add, we'll make that eleven, eleven B after eleven A, okay? Is that okay? Any further additions to the agenda? Anyone? If not, entertain a motion for.
Make a motion with the agenda, mayor.
Okay, a motion made by Joe Davenport, would there be a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lucy Ricketts, any discussion on the motion? Not always in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed. Okay, you have your minutes from your June second meeting. I'd like for the council to please review those minutes, take a look at them and see perhaps if there's any items that you all feel needs better clarification or anything that you'd like to add to those agenda, to those minutes. And if you, once you get ready, I'll entertain a motion that those minutes be approved and or amended. Anyone have anything? Yet?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, motion been made by Laura Taylor, would there be a second? Not yet. Second by Lucy, or was that Latasha? Sorry, Latasha. Please speak in your mic so we can get it on our YouTube video, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the minutes themselves? If not, always in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, let's move to item six, our payables tonight. Cindy Alvano, our director of public finance, is here to move through our financials tonight, so please take a look at your payables. And Cindy, if you'd like to add anything, comments to this particular document, please do so.
The one thing that I would just like to remind the city council that our fiscal year ended June of twenty twenty four. So this is, while this is the last month reported in that fiscal year, this is not the final, final financials. Once we get to the financial report for year end, this is the preliminary, the payables, the check register that we're gonna review first, that is a final report. So I'll take questions on the check register first, if anybody has any questions on that.
I'm making a motion to approve it. Your fund check register payables.
Okay, Joe, thank you, Joe, motion been made by Joe Davenport. Entertain a second.
I'll second it.
Second by Kenneth Powell, any discussion on the motion? If not, always in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Okay, Cindy, with next document, please?
Okay, page one, statement of revenues currently reported for fiscal year end, June thirtieth. The city took in just shy of eleven million dollars for the year. With the largest item being our compensation tax revenue, which we'll get into more detail through our, through code enforcement and give some clarification on the numbers there for the year and the quarter. The second largest category that took in revenue dollars is our insurance tax. Moving on to, it's actually, I think, probably on your list, page one, going into the expenses with the administration expenses. For the fiscal year, we are slightly showing on this report that we were thirty thousand dollars over budget. Again, I want to remind everyone that this is not a final audited report, but just a capture of all the expenses as allocated thus far through June, June thirty.
We're, we're on statement of revenues, right?
No, we've passed on to the next page, administrative statement of expenditures. Which is, is, I believe in your packet, it may say page one.
Two. Cut off the page numbers.
Oh, okay. They'd be up in the top right hand corner?
This one. Two.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, mine got cut off on the print.
Is everyone following along with Cindy? That's, that would be the first question. Yes, yes.
Yes, sir.
Moving on to page three, special appropriations. The largest item that we can see there was two or three old reserve. We had budgeted four million. For fiscal year June of twenty five, we only, and I don't want to say they leave it funded here again, this is only a request for funds, this is not even our, so they're not obligations of older reserve. It's just cash that we have funded out of our bank account. Budgeted five twenty six million, current year day three months.
Cindy, I have a question.
Yeah.
On that, the older OC chamber, the ninety five thousand, what, what does that go toward?
That is both the older and the Oldham County, for the older board and the Oldham County Chamber, that was being designated and not that both older and the Chamber will cost each year in support from the city.
What, but I mean, what's it? What's it pay for? Is it salaries or what, what does it go to?
They have discretion over what they can spend the funds on, but primarily it is for staffing support.
They also serve Jason as, as the staffing to the Oldham and La Grange Development Authority in addition to the Chamber of Commerce itself. So David and Sandy are the staffing portion of the older board who put up, deal with all the payables, expenditures for the older board in the development of Oldham Reserve in addition to what they do with chamber activities as an association. You know, business, businesses that they try to entice to come to the chamber and things like that, just everyday chamber commerce functions.
Okay, so it's not their salaries, it's not Sandy and David's salaries, it's them taking.
There would be salaries of them in there plus the other two or three ladies that work at, at the chamber office, yes.
Okay. And then included in that would be like schmoozing businesses, taking, taking them out to dinner, bringing them out here to show them around the park, that kind of thing, is that?
I don't know about schmoozing businesses.
Well, you know what I'm saying, they're trying to get, recruit businesses out here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that makes sense.
Yes, ma'am.
And then economic development, the twenty thousand, what's the, what's the difference between that in the, in the older chamber?
That's a category that's been in our budget for some times, sometime, Jason. Heather and Cindy always are looking for somewhere in terms of economic development, such as, I know one item that comes out of there to mind is the Oldham County, what's happening newspaper letter that we, we join in. Not every fall and or spring with it, but that, when we do, that's where that comes from.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I just, I didn't know about it, I'm the, or the chair of.
This year, this year, we cut that down to ten thousand dollars for that line item, but I took and added in two other items to make up that. One is a conceptual idea to maybe have a, a land designer come in here and work with our street committee and try to see if we can try to have some idea to beautify Highway fifty three coming up into La Grange from the interstate. Okay. So that's sort of like gonna be a, a study of, of someone who maybe could say, you could do this and maybe improve the site coming from fifty through up into downtown. And the second five thousand was to work with our parks department and our parks committee on trying to develop a idea and conceptual remaining park plan for the two and a half or three acres we bought with the Percerson property over at Springs Park to see perhaps if we'd want to put walking trails down through there, maybe place an amphitheater down in there or just anything that the parks committee may want to see happen furthermore in Springs Park.
Okay, so it's kind of a.
So it's down to ten in this fiscal year and five went to Highway fifty three of conceptual ideas and the other five went to Springs Park. Okay. For those types of uses.
Okay.
Go ahead, Cindy, or whomever.
Okay.
And then I had, I had one more question on there. Let's see, oh, historic preservation, there's twenty thousand, what's, what's the, what's that go toward?
Barbara Manley, who runs the historical preservation and with her historical commission, they use it to pay Barbara her monthly income appropriation of eight hundred dollars a month to be commission secretary. And you've also have some money in there for the commission to maybe take possibly a, a, a out of town trip in historical preservation that maybe is put on by the National Association of Historic Preservation. And basically, that's, that's where it is. And then, I don't know if you came to the seminar they, they had here in the community center in the last year, so they did a workshop, all day Saturday workshop, and they paid a fellow to come in on how to scrape old houses and restore old houses and it was an all day workshop. I know I attended part of it. I think Trey, I think Trey was their son, Latasha, she showed up, Lucy, so that was, I forget what that expense was, I think they paid that fellow two or three thousand bucks to come in here and put on a days with seminar from somewhere in the country.
Well, and I noticed there's a line item two for Barbara Callaway, speaker presented at the president for three hundred and sixteen dollars in addition to.
She, she supposedly, I recall, she went to speak maybe in Lexington or something to a preservation council, speaking about what's going on here in La Grange in terms of preservation. And I want to say she may be paid for the hotel or something out of her pocket on her own credit card and she is reimbursed for that, Jason.
And that's on top of the twenty thousand that we give them for going out of town and stuff?
No, that would be part of it.
Oh, okay.
She just got reimbursed out of that fund of the.
Okay, this is a line item for this, okay, I got you. I got you. And then my only other question was the three hundred and fifty thousand for three oh nine West Main, and the total already is three sixty two, but I thought we were, I thought all that stuff was already paid up.
Not, not in, in this last fiscal year that this is the year we're talking about, we didn't get a whole lot accomplished in the year preceding for the, for the three oh nine West Main property. So that's actually, the bulk of it was done to get it finished in that particular year, Jason.
Okay, all right. All right, that makes sense, that's.
Okay, yes, sir.
That's all my questions on it, thank you.
And if I remember correctly, I think Barbara received, and La Grange received, an award at that presentation that she went to. I can't remember exactly what it was.
Okay, Cindy, what else on that, this document, ma'am?
Does anybody have any additional questions on the special appropriations? Okay, moving on to page four for the parks. Not really anything specific that we need to call out. There, we do still have some remaining funds that we do owe to Miranda Construction for the completion of the Eagle Creek Golf Course Clubhouse, so we'll have some additional expenses that will go back against this fiscal year.
Cindy, what is fill in hole at ECGC for three hundred, for three hundred grand? That's, we're not just throwing money in a hole, are we?
No, and, and I can tell you that that was part of the construction project and the parking lot expansion. I, I, I wasn't here when they did this twenty four, twenty five budget, but I, I do know that these particular line items were called out specifically, and I think it's just in the language and the line items how they were originally budgeted, and I didn't pull anything out, out of that. But I do know that the work that was done out at Eagle Creek, if you look to, I believe it's the, the south there of southeast of the parking lot, you know, where they have that big drainage ditch, that that was all incorporated into a lot of the work that's already been completed and worked.
Trey, is that where they filled in the old Green Valley Pool, is that what that might be?
Yes, so they had, the prior council approved, and we went to older board to get dirt from Oldham Reserve, so that dirt had to be brought in. Actually, I think when they were digging the detention basin, so that, that was part of the work as well, I think they found some of the old pool, still down in the hole. But yes, so they filled the dirt up, then it was the pavement, and then it was the detention basin itself, so there was, there was a lot of.
Okay, I was just curious, I saw that filling hole and obviously that kind of.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Jason, thank you. Anything, okay, keep on moving, Cindy, please.
Okay, page five, moving on to the police expenditures. I don't really have anything specific to call out there, there's a couple budgeted items that specifically, we've got a couple vehicles right now that are at the outfitters, new vehicle, police vehicles that are getting outfitted that, once we finalize, will be added to the twenty five budget and expenditures for June year end. Moving on to page seven, Public Works. Don't have anything really to call out there, I know that we have a new employee that we have now registered for some training to get their C D L license. That has already been incurred, but we have not yet received the bill for that, which will come out of the line item, C D L license, that's why that particular line item. Shows that we're way under budget for the share, but we'll have an additional expense there.
Uh, one question on that, the Commerce Parkway use study, I thought we had discussed it, that, that use study, I remember the gentleman came in and he was looking at it, but I thought that was from years and years ago. Mayor, wasn't that use study on commerce, didn't, weren't we told that started like ten or twelve years ago or something?
No, this was, this is the one that we joined in with Oldham County in the last fiscal year, Jason, to do a intense study from one end of commerce to the other to try to anticipate, as far as, it has a hundred foot right away through Commerce Parkway, try to anticipate as the. The Commerce Parkway continues to grow, where, where do you think that possible turning lanes, a third lane, a ingress, egress, you know, just traffic movements in general, especially in and around Allen Lane when the, when the Ernie Harris Bridge and, and Ernie Harris Parkway get extended up Allen Lane to go underneath the railroad tracks, which I believe that project is to be let by the state of Kentucky this month. To try to keep moving forward, to put the Allen Lane underpass in, that Allen Lane that we've been trying to get done for thirty or forty years, but I think that project will be left this month by state of Kentucky, so you should see some movement down there on the actual construction of the new road leading up through there. So did I answer your question?
Yeah, it's, it's different than the, than the other study that the gentleman was just doing.
Yes, yes.
Okay, got you, got you, thank you.
I got a question about our C D L guys. When we invest in them, and this might be a quarry and question, but while I'm thinking about it, I wanted to ask, when we invest in those guys, and I'm glad that we do. When we invest in those guys, and I'm glad that we do, do we make these guys sign any type of, uh, contract that once they have their CDO that they have to stay a certain amount of years? Because the majority of the municipalities and cities and towns and just private companies that invest that, because it's a very, I mean, it's seven, eight thousand dollars that you invest now-
Yeah.
Into an employee, rather than when they get it, they can just bolt. And we've got that, you know, if, if they leave, how do we get that back? Because, do we have anything like that in place?
I believe that we do. And I know Corey wasn't able to make it tonight. He's still on vacation. Um, but I, I, I'm almost with 100% certainty that Corey does have something in place. If I can just confirm with him, or I can have KDR HR director speak to that when,
Yeah.
when she gets up here and gives her director's report if she has any clarity on that. But I can follow up and get you an answer to that.
Good call, Kayla. Good catch.
Yeah.
I know that if we don't, we need to get something just because of, you know, private companies can pay a lot more than we can. And when we get invested into an employee, we have to get that back.
Yeah.
I've got, I've got every CDO there is to be had, and I don't know why it's costing seven or eight thousand dollars. I mean, I could tell everybody what's going to be on the pre-trip. The engine inspection, the, the parts of the dump truck. I mean, where's this seven, eight thousand dollars coming from?
Well, now you're gonna have to, whoever we get, the, the state passed this, uh, last year. So now it's, if you go get, if you go get, when you get your road test, you've got to go to class and you've got to have a certain amount of hours and you've got to pay at school. So we're gonna have to pay seven or eight thousand dollars. Now, going to get your permit and taking the written test, that's, that's, that's fine. But once you get your permit, you have to get scheduled and then you have to go sit in class for about a month straight, uh, to get your CDO. So we're gonna be out a lot of money, which, which is fine. I mean, we should reward our guys and, and, and want our guys to get that. But if we're, if we're gonna do that, we need to make sure that our guys stick around at least two years. That's what most of the cities and towns that I deal with that, that do that, make their employees sign as a two-year contract. Once you, once you invest that into them, they have to stay two years. Because if they don't, then you get to get that back from them.
And I, and, and to be honest, I, I believe that, that Corey does, because we were talking about that in conjunction, you know, with, with the police department. You know, when we invest in somebody, you know, at the county, we do have that same policy in place for, um, police officers.
Yeah, we do that at our work. I mean, just to sell equipment, we, we hire guys that don't have their CDLs, but we will send them to get that. So if they do, they have to stay at least two years until they, if they leave.
And you are correct. And that is, and that is what I was alluding to, um, with the expense that we're still gonna incur-
Sure.
That we just registered that particular person in, in the new program.
Right. And we just need to make sure we get them to sign something that it's documented.
Yep, absolutely. Okay. Um, moving on to page seven, uh, city bus. Um, don't have anything specific to call out, uh, there with the bus. Moving to page nine, uh, ABC. Alcohol budget, um, again, 50% of the new vehicle will be, um, allowable for ABC funds. Again, that vehicle is being outfitted. That expense is still to come in. And that, that's it. In terms of, uh, financial statements, does anybody have any current questions? Additional questions?
Cindy, do you, uh, know when the newest audit will be presented?
When the new what?
The newest audit.
So, um, I have not yet reached out to the auditor. I owe him a communication this week. Unfortunately, due to some vacations and search of procedures, we are behind a couple weeks. So he has not yet started his field, field work. Um, I expect that to be closer to the end of July as opposed to the middle of July that I had originally hoped for.
Okay. When, when would it be presented, at least an estimation to the council?
By the time we finish, by the time he gets out here and does his field work, gets the report put together, it could be October.
October. Will that be for fiscal year 2425?
No, that would be for fiscal year, uh, 2223. And as previously reported, the reason we are so significantly behind in the audit is we are having to recreate from scratch every transaction in a new database. So we're mov- moving much more quickly than we, we would on an annual basis. Um, but we are still limited to other, um, tasks that come up during the week.
Why, why are we having to go through all this extra drama with the recreating all this stuff? Refresh my memory.
Because our data was corrupted and we could not get good financial information out of our database. Uh, we, we consulted with our, um, IT software company. And they had one or two suggestions. And the least painful was to recreate all the transactions.
Do you expect the 2324 budget would then be next October, or you think we're going to be able to do it?
No, I, I, I think as we go forward, um, the integrity of the transactions that were put into the system, um, as we move forward, I know at least since I have been here, things are getting, um, coded more accurately, better descriptions. We're finding more, uh, invoices available to get that data. So no, I do not anticipate that one to take near as long either.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead, Cindy.
I was just gonna say, the, the very last report that we want to look at is the bank balances report. Balances between our investment accounts and what we currently have in checking accounts as of June 30th is roughly 17.5 million, with 13.3 of that in our investment accounts.
17.5 million total we have in the bank with 13, what'd you say, how much in?
13.3 in investments.
13.3 in investment accounts. And eight of that we know is going toward the sewers. Is that correct?
Is committed, yes.
Okay.
Or, or I shouldn't say committed, it, it's committed slash earmarked for that, yes.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
If no one has any further questions, I'd like to get a motion by the council to approve the financial statements that Cindy has gone over tonight from, from this council. So it will be recorded in the minutes that, uh, the financials were approved by the council.
Motion to approve the financials, Mayor.
Second.
Motion made by Joe Davenport, second by Lucy Ricketts. Any further discussion on that? If not, as always, as opposed to the motion, let me know if I'm saying aye.
Aye. Thanks, Cindy.
Okay. Thank you, Cindy. Okay, let's go to, uh, let's go to our, our first public comment. Yes, sir. So who would like to come up tonight and speak during our first public comment session? And if you could, try to limit your first conversation to approximately four minutes. If you need more time, be glad to try to extend it for you. So anyone here tonight to speak during public comment?
Mr. Earler wanted to know where the popcorn is, Mayor.
Mayor, um, this is probably more of an old new business section, but I'd prefer to speak about this in the first public comment section, if that's okay? Um, it's related to, I just wanted to report back from the Oda meeting from June 12th. What was said, and, um, I guess, throw it out to the council, um, as far as next steps. Um, so on the June 12th meeting, the Oda meeting, uh, I did ask the Oda Board and the development representation there, that we, uh, put, put a 150-day moratorium on, uh, data centers. And, um, there was a lot of discussion that was, was brought up. Uh, I did put it in the, in the form of a motion. Uh, there was no second to that motion, so it died for lack of a second. I believe it came from our development partners, uh, and others in the room, that they claimed that putting a 150-day moratorium on Oda would send a bad message to the business community. And my, uh, statement back to that was, I think it sends a bad message to the community. You know, the, the city passed the 150-day moratorium at that time. The county had not passed it, but it looked like it was probably going that way. Um, you know, Oda was ultimately created by the city and the county. Uh, we fund that organization, uh, along with the, with the county as well. But ultimately, um, it died for lack of a second. Um, there was also a claim, which I think it was brought forth when we passed our 150-day moratorium, but, um, that Oda was claiming that the city doesn't have jurisdiction over Oldham Reserve, even though that's part of the city's, the city limits. So I don't really agree with that. I guess my first question, I, we've, not to rehash what we've covered before, but, um, since that's Oda's, um, stance that our 150-day moratorium doesn't apply to Oldham Reserve, I guess I'm looking for Beach, uh, to give his opinion on, Oda says that that doesn't apply to them, but we are saying that it does. So where do, where do we go from, from there, from here on that?
If I could, I, I think one of the main things, of course, you know I attend all those meetings too. But I think one of the main things was they were concerned about the master agreement. We got a master agreement with the developers and, and it seemed to be like it could be a lawsuit or something if, if, if the master agreement was broken. Am I right, Beach?
Yes.
When I say that. But that's, that's what I took it to be, more than, so that's all I, that's all I took from it, was-
Trey, to answer your question, um, it's a jurisdictional thing, okay? Um, it's kind of like a series of Venn diagrams in which you've got the Oldham County, of, of the way that the zoning, planning and zoning system works. You've got the Oldham County, the joint zoning. And then with, within that, there are various cities that have their own home rule jurisdiction for zoning and board of adjustment matters. And then the theory here is that there's a third circle that overlaps between the city and the county with respect to Oldham Reserve. And that there's a contractual obligation that is built into the PUD-type zoning. PUD zoning is bas- basically an independent zoning structure in which the owner of the PUD zone has exclusive jurisdiction, semi-exclusive, largely jurisdiction over its zoning, and, uh, subject to review and recommendation by the Oldham County Joint Planning Commission. So you've kind of got a big circle, which is the Oldham County Planning and Zoning, which includes the four or five cities that are in that, in the county. And then inside that, you've got a circle, which is the city of La Grange, as well as cities like Crestwood. Can't remember if Goshen has one, but, uh, anyway, we're in there. And then there's a third circle, which is Oda, the Oldham Reserve. And there's a degree to which the two inner circles cir- or overlap. And that's the area of which the city has jurisdiction over the portion of that. If that makes, a little clarification, but, uh, ever since algebra in the eighth grade, I love Venn diagrams.
Let me, let me know when I can get in, Mayor.
You'll get in right now, Jason.
All right. Um, the safe, healthy, safe, safety, welfare and health of our citizens overrules everything, which we are in charge of. So I, I don't care what they think, they're not, uh, they're not under us or whatever. They are. I got news for them. And I'll use the same example that I used with the county and the city. If they start building something in there, say they start building a data center in there, and they find radon or something else that's poisonous, some government entity is gonna come in and shut it down for public health, safety and welfare. And they're not gonna be able to worry about being sued or any of that. They're gonna say, no, we care about the citizens and their safety and their health and their welfare. We're shutting this down. We don't care what contract you got with whatever. This trumps everything else. Same thing here. We're concerned about the health, safety and welfare, which is why we put the moratorium in. If they try to do it, um, I think we got good grounds to go after them there. I think they'll be in deep, deep trouble. If they try to put something in over top of the, uh, moratorium.
I guess my question, I guess, is again directed to Beach. So if, uh, entity came in and wanted to build a data center, would we then, how would we be notified? I guess planning and zoning would let us know, and then that's when we would say, um, hey, we've put a moratorium on there, or-
Where, where do you mean?
In Oldham Reserve. So let's say some company came out of nowhere and said, hey, yeah, we're wanting to build this data center. Oda says, yeah, we're fine, because the city doesn't have jurisdiction over Oda. And, or the Oda property, which is, I don't really, I don't agree with that. I, uh, it's the city of La Grange. I, I don't really understand why that, that's even be an argument, but, um,
I think we all agree.
Would they s- s- uh, request a, a permit for their development? And then that's when we would say, hey, no, we've got this moratorium?
I think, I think that's a, I think that's a position I suppose Oda could take if they were approached, that they could, um, they would, I mean, they could take, I mean, I don't represent them. They've got their own attorneys and multiple. But, uh, I wouldn't be surprised that if they felt like they had a great top client and that it was, uh, fill within the definition of a, of a PUD-type zoning, that they would arguably not be bound by a moratorium. If they want to take that position, and I suppose, Jason, if you wanted to oppose that, you could, I mean, if you like litigation, you could file declaratory judgment action or something and ask Judge Crosby to decide whether he, what he believes, you know? Uh, but, um, it's, it's all speculative. Nothing like that's happening.
It's, it's my understanding that Oda exists as an interlocal, I think it's called interlocal agreement with the city and the county. So if, if we don't like what they're doing, we could just say-
Disband them.
Sorry, we don't want you to represent us anymore.
Well, I mean, I'll, interlocal agreements are, agreement is kind of like the United States is an interlocal agreement between 50-
Well, we'll have a civil war.
So it's like two, it's like there are two bodies that have come together-
To succeed.
A third entity, which is called the Oldham, Oldham, uh, Old, La Grange Development Authority.
It, it just seems to me that they exist because we support them. And-
Yes, we just noticed in the-
And if there is some, if, if there is something that they're doing that we don't agree to, we don't think that that, then it seems to me there's a little bit of problem there.
Well, yeah, there is. And there's a, there's a, there's a body there that's, uh, three people from the city, three people from the county, uh, are on there. And, uh, they are appointed and approved by our council. Have, have approved the three people that are there. Same thing with the county. Uh, they're, they are like a special purpose government entity. They're just like the utility commission.
Right.
Okay? The utility commission does have their own rules and regulations. They can do pretty much what they want to do. Uh, and our, our remedy, if the utility commission does something, uh, that we don't, we, laypeople don't know is good or bad for the community, then I suppose that we could attempt to disband the utility commission, but that's sort of rather extreme, uh, but that's a possibility, but they're independent.
We can defund them.
Yeah, that's what I was, that was saying.
And if they're going against what we want, we've already started a whole, a whole storm with the entire community. We, I think it's pretty clear where the community stands on this. If they're not gonna do what the community wants, then, uh, maybe we need a motion to defund them and let them, uh, come after us if they want.
I mean, this, the, the, uh, ODA was created in 2005. I mean, this is no recent conspiracy. It was created in 2005 for the purpose of buying this land and other economic development things. Uh, and, uh, that's what's been going on for 20 years and now finally it's coming to the point that you've got roads, we're putting in sewers, utilities.
Right.
Uh, and, uh, people are really coming around now.
We've done everything about it.
Ramp number 20.
Well, I, I mean, I'm not, and I'm, I'm not saying anything bad about ODA. I, I think ODA does good. I think what they were concerned about was the fact that the, this other entity that is pursuing people for Oldham Reserve might not like our stance. Isn't that it basically? That they might not like our stance, but, and when it all comes down to who's in charge, we are.
We're not really in charge of ODA.
Well.
Yes, we are.
I, I would say 50% of it, yes.
Right. I mean, all we could do is basically disband the interlokal.
And I don't, and I'm not saying I want to do that. I don't.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not sure I don't want to do that. I don't want to make a motion to defund them. Who are the people that are, uh, don't want to do the moratorium, Trey, so that we know the names?
Wait, excuse me?
I'd like an answer first.
Wait, hold on a second.
Who are the, who are the ones that, uh, you couldn't get a second from, Trey?
Well, there, I was the only one that made the motion and there was no second. So, um, there was one individual that wasn't in attendance for that meeting, uh, but there were four other members there that didn't make a motion.
Okay, who's the members?
Is fine.
Who are the members?
He's the bad guy, because that's who you're, one of them.
Who, who are the other members?
Hold on a second, hold on a second, please. Uh, I was at the meeting and Trey made the motion and I, I tried my best to say, what is he gonna hurt?
Agreed.
To, to, right, Trey?
Mayor supported it, agreed.
To, to go along with this. And I will tell you all that, uh, a fellow named Chris George interrupted the conversation. He's the, he's the attorney for, um, Hollenbach Oakley, who's our private developer. And so he interrupted it and I, I sort of considered the same thing as what I think the county was dealing with, with the, I can't recall, everything's so mixed up in my mind, but it was a board of adjustments about putting in the moratorium and there's concern, Jason, uh, Kenzer, that somebody was going to get sued. You know what I'm saying? And so he said, okay, sue us, that's what we got attorneys for, you know, it happens every day. Well, I guess in this particular instance, if, if, um, because the way I understood it and Trey correcting if I'm wrong, Chris George said by virtue of the interloca agreement that Mary Ellen Kenzer signed during her time as a county judge and Elsie Carter was the mayor, they're, they are the two elected leaders that entered into this agreement. Um, he just contends that there's language in there that, uh, ODA, you, you really don't want to go down this path because we have development partners. We have talked about this LOI, letter of intent with this company since sometime last year. Is that right, Trey? LOI goes back about this particular company, right?
Right.
Okay.
Particular company, you mean WHB?
No.
Or you're talking about a different one?
Different, different one. And, and they had shown a letter of intent as interest in, in the place possibly. And I think, um, that's basically what it comes down to is they, their attorney made the, the, the suggestion that I would advise you, ODA board, not to do this for fear of, uh, some kind of lawsuit or something that your development partner could bring. So I guess, um, that's the way I understood it. Is that, is that a correct analysis, Trey and Joe?
I feel like that's accurate, yep.
So now.
They've been using that scare tactic for a while.
Uh, I'll ask the council, I'll ask the council, would you all permit David Bazanas, who's one of these chamber staffers, come up and you all can ask him anything you choose to, if he's willing to come forward, but if you'd say, no, you'd rather not hear from him tonight, then I'm going to not allow him to come.
We're still in public comment, right?
Yes, sir.
He's a member of the public, so anybody here can comment about anything.
But I've just, I didn't, when I asked the first public comment, no one showed up, right? So.
Right.
So Mr. Bazanas, you want to come up and try to bring some, some opinion from your, your office and what, what the ODA board's talking about?
This is on? All right.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I'm sorry, I was over at my house. I just sat down and, uh, put this on YouTube and saw the topic was ODA and thought I should come over here to be able to answer questions, which I'm happy to do.
David, could you say who you are?
My name is David Bazanas. I'm the president of Oldham Chamber in Economic Development and one of my roles is to serve as executive director of the Oldham LaGrange Development Authority, which is the body that oversees the development of Oldham Reserve. So, uh, sorry about that. I do that every time I come up here. I, um, just, just as a point of clarity from the position of the ODA board, um, in relation to their attorney feeling obligated to, their attorney is obligated to inform them when they're in a scenario where they could be sued or litigated against. And so that's what he did. And then he said that we need to go to the, uh, technical review committee or the, uh, planning commission to let them know that ODA should be considered for an exemption and their recommendations that they were going to send to fiscal court. And then he said, we need to come here and talk to the city council. City council decided to pass the moratorium. Councilman Camer did a, a great job, I think, expressing the views of, of the council to the ODA board. There was a discussion about it. Um, and while there was the conversation that it could be litig- litigated against and our partners, uh, attorney, Chris George, did say, yes, this could be litigated against, I don't think there was any interest from the partners to sue over a moratorium. It was the board members that decided not to second Councilman Camer's motion. As far as, you know, there's been discussion about transparency with ODA. I'll tell you about the city's transparency with ODA. In addition to having Councilman Camer on the board and Councilman Davenport has been probably every meeting for almost the last 10 or 15 years.
Since 2014.
For, he's been there for a long time.
I've missed very many of them.
And he's been at all of them, Mayor Black and Beach Craig Mall, uh, uh, many of them. In addition to that, you have the presidents of two of your top employers that are on that board. The president of Baptist Health, Clint Cahoe, who wasn't there that day to be able to, uh, weigh in. And then the chairman of the board, John Stewart, who's the president of Encompass. So those are two top employers, reputable employers of this community, multiple city council people, the mayor and the city attorney in those meetings. So there's a lot of transparency. When there are things that are put out on Facebook and debated, I think that's fine. I think that we have to be careful of the fact that we have, when we have folks like the president of Baptist Health on our board, we need that type of skillset on this board. It's a complicated project. It has a long history and it needs folks that have a high quality of understanding of these types of projects. And so we want to make sure that those volunteers don't feel like they're in the middle of some kind of, uh, problem that they decide it's better for them to not be on the board and then it becomes harder to find good quality board members. So I would just caution everybody, and if you don't want to talk to me, you can talk to John Stewart, who's the chairman. So the city appointee is the chairman of the ODA board and he is about as approachable of a person as I've ever met in my entire life. I also welcome any conversations you have, questions about data centers, questions about Oldham Reserve, all those types of things. There is no fear that this community is going to be, uh, have a data center proposed or an application put in before moratoriums ended and that there are regs in place. I don't think anybody's concerned about that. So just want to assuage those fears and just say, the ODA board has to, they are a development board. They are in the business of creating tax base and that's three things, tax base, infrastructure growth and quality jobs. Those are very important things. And at the point that a data center or any other type of employer may want to have a conversation with them, I think they owe it to the community to at least go through that conversation. There is a lot of work that has to go. At the point somebody inquires, first of all, inquiries happen all the time and they go away. At the point somebody puts in a letter of intent, it really means nothing. It's just, we're kind of interested. At the point you have a purchase agreement, there are really good projects that everybody's all on the same page and they take a year to work out the purchase agreement. And then when somebody enters into a purchase agreement, you get into a due diligence period, which leads to a sales. So there's just a lot of work that has to go into these things. And in fairness to the ODA board or anybody else who has to consider accommodating a data center or any other type of project, it will take time for them to go through and listen to what is presented to them for them to be able to make decisions. And ultimately I can tell you, this city council and the Oldham County Fiscal Court need not be fearful. That ODA board is fully, uh, aware of the responsibility that they have this community and nobody's making money under the table or getting anything out of this other than services this community to those projects. So I just want to make sure that's out there. I know that everybody, it's, it's a complicated project. You're responsible for our tax dollars and I appreciate that. So I know this is difficult. There's a lot of moving parts to it. There's a lot of people. Um, I talked to Councilman Camer more than, I talked to many of you, so, you know, what do you know about what I have to say? I understand that. I, I welcome these conversations. I'm happy to come to you and talk to you more often and I'm happy to host you in our office or however you want to talk about those things, but I really think that the rhetoric, I think that we're all closer to being on the same page than it comes off when we're talking in public. And so I know this most recent topic has been, uh, a volatile one. There's still a lot of really great work that can be done and there's a lot still to be discussed. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I also will shut up and go away.
I think the one thing that, that really concerned me was the fact that these, I can't remember the name of the people, but that they, it was kind of like a veiled threat. You know, if you, if you all do this, then we'll do this and, and, you know, it may not be nothing at all, but there's, there was a possibility.
Sure.
And then that's, oh, everybody goes, oh, no. So I think that, that was, that's the only thing.
I hate that it came off.
Threatened to sue us.
Yeah.
Well, I was gonna say, I, I hate that it came off that way because there was no point where anybody threatened to sue anybody. What, what it was, was ODA's attorney was obligated to say, we could be threatened with lawsuits over this.
Right.
That's all it was. Nobody said we're going to sue. Nobody postured like they were going to sue.
And everyone goes.
I know, well, I think, I think everybody's hackles were pretty hot up by the time that conversation happened.
Right.
It wa- it wasn't a meeting we were looking forward to coming to, I'll tell you that.
It wasn't very comfortable at all for anybody.
Sure.
And, uh, that would only be my only thing. I mean, ODA and, um, the, the city and the county have gotten along for many years and everything has been, you know, pretty even.
ODA's an extension of this city council, even though there's a special purpose government entity designation and nobody wants to have any of those types of issues, including the ODA board. But those statements made in the public and, uh, those things matter once attorneys show up.
Right.
So, uh, but I can tell you this, the, come to an older meeting and talk to those older volunteers, they're great folks. The man and the judge have done a great job putting together a good team. So, and just for your, for your knowledge and for the public's knowledge, you get Clint Cahoe and John Stewart and Trey Camer representing the city, Stephen Edwards, who's a developer, um, Brian Veaneman, who's an attorney, uh, he's a construction litigator, uh, out of Crestwood and, um.
Bob.
Bob Die, magistrate Bob Die is the, uh, he's the personality of the group. So, but I can tell you all those folks, those are long meetings. They're complicated. There's a lot of big decisions that come down to things like permits over streams and, uh, every amount of thing and everything adds up to lots of dollars. So everybody's scrutinized over every piece of it and everybody takes it very seriously. So, and I, I think, you know, and feel free to speak up if, if I'm, uh, creating a different picture.
I would agree. It's, it's a, it's a good group. I just, uh, felt like this was maybe, um, I guess it's a difference in opinion on, uh, maybe a first difference in opinion where the city said, yeah, the, this does apply because it's within the city limits. And then the ODA board was collectively, uh, said, no, I don't think it does. But I feel like it does. And even as an ODA board member, I feel like it does. And that's why I, I brought up for a motion, but, you know, I'm, I'm mainly reporting for this group what happened. Um, you know, the, I think our, two meetings ago, I said I would bring it up, uh, which I did.
Yeah.
And that was the outcome, so.
Uh, what I'd maybe end up with too, David, is typically the mayor, maybe in the past, has put three members at large on the ODA board. I thought it was important for the first time ever to put a member of the city council on the ODA board to try to keep that conduit back and forth between ODA and what's going on there in this city council. That's the reason I put Trey Camer on there. What I'd ask you though, if, say, we, we got a meeting this Thursday, I believe, and say a company comes in there and, I don't want to talk about NDAs and all this stuff that's been dealt with in the last few months, uh, non-disclosed stuff, but I guess, give me your opinion, please. I don't know how the county would, but say we hear something in closed session about a company coming to Oldham Reserve and Trey Camer is a member of that body. Is it your belief that as much as he would like to share it with this city council, that he has to be quiet in terms of the member of the ODA board or should he be able to share that information with his city council members as to, okay, there's a big hotel coming to Oldham Reserve? They don't want anything said about this till they put the purchase agreement together.
Right.
It's just, they're just doing some initial looking, initial studies. What's your feelings on that?
Well, if it's an executive session, then it's inappropriate to talk about outside of executive session because.
Well, that's where, that's where these things are usually talked about.
Right.
Because.
Well, I could give you.
Wait a minute, these companies don't want that being discussed in open session yet.
Sure. Right. I can give you multiple reasons why that's the case.
My point on that is, on this LOI with this thing coming, you know, Trey could have heard that in closed session. I can't remember if he did or he didn't, but it's, it's, uh, sort of like him knowing that, but can't really relay it to his, to his city council co-members.
Right. It, it's inappropriate to do that. Here's, here's a couple of examples of why we wouldn't want to do that. Well, first of all, I'm independent from the city and the county in the sense that the city and the county invest in our office to, uh, serve economic development amongst other things. The significance of that is that a lot of private sector folks don't want to come and work directly with the government. So we can be a facilitator in the conversation. And so in situations like this, if somebody's considering moving to corporate headquarters here, and let's say they're in the region and they have 300 employees, well, they don't want their employees to know that they might be moving their company a couple of counties away because those people will start quitting, finding other jobs. They don't want their clients to know that because they might find other customers. So discretion's important. We use discretion and confidentiality as a practice. I rarely sign NDAs, but I'm available to do that, but we just try to manage the conversations as such to where we aren't in, in such a, a vulnerable situation. So in, in scenarios where it might be a national retailer, there are multiple developers trying to place the same retail retailer in an area. And so there's competitive, uh, advantages to all of this. So when you have somebody interested in an Oldham Reserve, which has put significant money into getting it ready for these types of things, if you start talking about those things before they're ready, there might be enough information to tip somebody else off where they can pull the trigger faster than somebody else, uh, on a property and completely derail the whole effort. An example of that would be the Kroger at exit, uh, 18 there in Buckner. That had been on hold for about 15 years. It's the first net new Kroger for the whole corporation in 15 years. And the reason they went forward was because Hy-Vee and public started looking all around Oldham County. So they had decided they had to go ahead and act in the market. So there's a lot of dynamics that are out of the control of anybody's office to be able to manage when it comes to this. So the best practice is typically to be, uh, quiet about those things. I will say the ODA board can reject any project that comes to it and just say, we don't want this project at any point in time on anything. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
So David, that, that excludes, like you said, executive session though. Obviously if Trey was going to tell us about something that was coming in that he thought the council would know, we would go into executive session to clear the room.
Oh, that you all could talk in executive session? I don't know how that was.
So he's.
That's a good question.
He doesn't need to keep it secret from us, but sometimes I get you need to keep it secret from the public, like you said, so that the employees don't find out customers.
I, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know the answer to that, but that's interesting.
Well, yeah, but what he, what he just said was what I asked you. Has Trey been a member of the ODA board? What Jason's thought was, could Trey come back here tonight and say, we need to talk about executive session to talk about this LOI that we have? I think you're.
Probably not, yeah.
That's what I'm.
Because, because if you breach your executive session. Because, because if you breach your executive session, then all this situation is compromised. So, but you're only subject to LaGrange's, I guess, reprimand.
Well, under the, under the code of ethics, Trey has done exactly what he's supposed to do, which is disclose a potential conflict of interest. And if it comes to a conflict, then he has an obligation to recuse himself from acting upon that. But it does not mean that he's obligated to breach his confidentiality agreement, if that's your question.
Oh, I don't think it's conflict. I think it's just, should Trey tell the council members or not, even in, in executive session? Hey, there's like, for example, Trey and I and Kenneth are on the Economic Development, Economic and Community Development Committee. Is that if there's something that's coming to Olde, someone is looking at it, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea for him to share that with us, but we would need to go into, obviously go into closed session and clear the room.
They could be able to share enough with you without having to reveal who the user was. I mean, type of industry, types of jobs, impacts, all that kind of stuff.
Okay. Beach, does that sound legally correct?
It sounds like, like a quick thought, but he doesn't have an obligation to disclose it to anybody in other, any third party.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Lakasha. Okay, talk into it, please.
Who is allowed to go into the executive session?
The board and staff and anybody who is welcomed in by the, the board. So when they vote to go into executive session, they have to say, this is the statute, we're going under executive session under and we're gonna go with these guests. Correct. It would be, it would be the board that would have to invite you. I'm just a staff person.
David, I had a quick comment and I don't know if it's really a question, but it just goes along to what Trey was saying initially. So Oldham Reserve is actually located within Oldham County, right?
Correct.
I, I'm not finished. Yeah. I was getting there. It's located in the county and it's also located within the city limits as well, correct?
Correct.
All right. And so the city has passed a moratorium last month or in May, I think it was. And then just about a week ago, the county passed a moratorium. And I think when Mr. Camer, you know, was talking about the older meeting of June 12th and he can't even get a second on his motion, I think there is a concern that, you know, there's people on the older board who might think that the moratorium of the city and the moratorium of the county don't apply to land that's actually within both of those jurisdictions. And to me, that's a concern. Just wanted to make that comment.
Sure.
I agree. It's interesting that the entire unanimously, the city council approved the moratorium and the majority of the fiscal court approved the moratorium. And meanwhile, on this board, the people that we've got on this board, fancy as they may be, only one person is representing what the community is overwhelming, what they want or don't want.
Well, I wouldn't.
That's a concern to me as well.
I wouldn't say that the older board isn't representing what the community wants. They haven't decided what the, that they are gonna set as far as the standard goes. They have the ability to do that. They very well may adopt the moratorium that is put in, or the, I'm sorry, the moratorium, the regs that are put in place, they may make them higher or more restrictive. So I, I think it's unfair to say that they've decided against that. I think that they were trying to do their fiduciary responsibility to their contractual obligations as well as make sure that the message was, we've been investing in this park for a long time and we want to make sure everybody knows we're open for business.
I'm, I'm just wondering if maybe because that came out, kind of a little bit out of the blue for them, that they really had not made it, excuse me, made a decision on whether to second it or not. Cause I mean, there's many times that things have come up that I'm gonna, I need to research that a little bit more.
Well, the, the.
And I'm not trying to second guess them, but.
I think the county representation of the board felt like they could not put them, they're county taxpayers or plus city too, into a situation where there might be legal ramifications. So they probably, since we're equal partners, they probably chose that we cannot do something that we've been advised by our own council, Hollenbach Oakley's council, maybe Mr. Craigmaugh, maybe the attorney on the actual older board was cautious of doing something like that. So maybe that's a reason they didn't act on it. Furthermore, our moratorium and anything we did in the city, the, the county early on intentionally did not include incorporated cities in this. They, they said, we're, this is only applies to the unincorporated areas of Oldham County. That's the reason they pushed the, the decision on us to create our own moratorium as a city. Now, the fact that, that we're still, they were still concerned and Chris George with the, was a concern to the whole board with the exception of Trey and myself, what would it hurt to do this? Well, that's, that's where they got their direction from, that you're basically putting a city and a county at risk in terms of a suit coming from, from whomever the LOI is with, I assume.
Okay.
Okay. So, okay, is that enough on this subject tonight, you all, right now for this matter?
I still had two, well, at least one other question. Not necessarily related to Olde, but just a, I guess, two, two comments. One, so, you know, the county already started, or I guess they've already started their 150 day. Ours isn't concurrent. Ours already started in advance. If we don't see any regulations proposed that, at that time, I guess we could extend that and, and be fine. So I guess that's more of a comment. My, my question is, so at some point, planning and zoning is gonna, I'm gonna call it a draft or proposal of regulations that they're gonna give to the county and to us for possible approval. Do we know when we'll see that draft? Just from past experiences, you know, planning and zoning's presented something to us and we haven't really had a, I think, a good opportunity to consider to draft and kind of have some back and forth to adjust as we see fit. They just kind of present it and say, you know, I'm not putting words in their mouth, but kind of take it or leave it. And most of the time we've, you know, approved whatever they've provided to us. But is there any way that we could, if there is a draft, receive it in advance prior to them coming and speaking to us? So that way, if we have additional input that we want to provide, we could do that in advance. So maybe that meeting might be more productive instead of giving something that maybe we don't like or want.
I, I think it's definitely possible for sure, Trey. I think that's something we should require. I think the technical review committee is probably trying to finalize what they, cause you know, I don't know if you followed the meeting where they had that TRC meeting, technical review committee meeting a few weeks ago. So I assume they'd be meeting soon to try to put that together. And then, once they put that together, I assume they're gonna forward on to planning, zoning and fiscal court to see perhaps if it's something that each.
I've heard around September is when that would happen.
Okay, okay. Okay. If, if we're finished, Mr. Lazans, thank you. David Cumming, and let's move on to Mr. Don Earl who wants to speak.
Yeah, I'd just like to put in the record here because this is, this is the concern that, that I have. This is from the minutes of Olde from November of 2024. Our partners, our partners informed the group that a large scale data center has inquired about locating in Oldham Reserve. The company is interested in investing approximately $50,000 to perform due diligence on a proposed site in Oldham Reserve. But first requested a letter from Olde, which states that the board is in agreement that a data center would be an acceptable project to approve. The older board agreed that the project would be a good fit for the development and approved Chairman Stewart to sign a letter once reviewed by older counsel on the motion from Mr. Edwards seconded by Mr. Cahill, approved five to zero. So the older board has said that a large data center is an acceptable project for Oldham Reserve, just, just for the record.
Wow.
I don't know if they said a large data center, they said a data center. I mean, I guess you can't deny that. I don't think they said a data center with 2 million square feet on the roof. I mean, there's a data center in Baptist Hospital.
Is there a legal question? Shh. Wait. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Barry Laws. I just wanted you all to be alerted that the comprehensive plan review has been in process right now. And some of the wording I'm seeing in the new language is they're using a lot of subdivision regulations should implement the principles of the comprehensive plan. I think that's obscene. Why do we have a comprehensive plan? I mean, you guys aren't responsible for this, but you guys have power. So if you could help take note of those kind of languages that are in the new comprehensive plan, it would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Should instead of shall.
Exactly.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Rob Houchens. I wanted to come up here and do nothing but say positive things and I shall stick to that. And it's a great thing to say. And here's what I wanted to say. If you watched, you guys were obviously here for the city council meeting, but if you watched what happened then at the county level, I want to know, want you guys to know that there was obviously arguments brought up about legal issues and whether somebody could be sued and you guys voted unanimously and you led the way in this county and you started the, the, the process. You saw what needed to happen. You voted in a way that made it where it was clear. And I wonder what would have happened differently at the county level with the magistrates if you guys had voted something in with carve outs and sections. So again, if you've listened to anything that I've argued and I've stood before the Board of Adjustments and presented in my case, what I've wanted is to make sure we didn't use the CUP process. That's what bothers me. All I've wanted all along is to protect the Oldham County residents by not using conditional use process to do it and putting in regulations. And now that we've done what we've done, then we've got the process to work through. Now, I'm sure there will be arguments about what's gonna be in the regulations and I'm, I'm sure there's gonna be heated debate about that. But I, again, I'm up here for one reason, one reason only, is to say that you guys voted unanimously, you led the way in this county and I appreciate your effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Okay. Thank everyone for speaking during public comment tonight. We're gonna move on to item eight and that will be our Main Street Director's Report, Mrs. Sarah Garrett. What's that? Ms. Or who, I don't know. Sarah Garrett. Thank you, Sarah.
I am married, yeah. Sorry, that's loud. Yeah, someone, yeah, got locked down young, I tell you. He's great. Hi, guys, how are we? So just a quick little recap of some stuff we've been doing. Obviously our farmers market and that's been going wonderfully. We've had a lot of traction there. We're, so we're pretty happy about that. Our July Trackside Tunes slash Summer Fest, we worked with Parks and Rec on that and that went amazing. We had several hundred people show up for that and the band was fabulous. And I want to thank you guys for coming out. I saw quite a few of y'all there. So thank you for your support. Coming up, we have the next Trackside Tunes on August 1st. It's a band called Gold Brick is gonna be coming up for that. We have the Book Fair on August 2nd, spearheaded by Tony Acrey, a local author and publisher. And I just got word that we are currently in the phases of planning the Alley Loop Festival this year and that will take place on October. This Friday, we are going to start, we're going to have a recording with Great Day Live to showcase Main Street and all we have to offer here. So it'll be aired at a later date, but we'll have a total of three segments with them. So it's just gonna be another way for us to promote the city and Main Street LaGrange. And next month, hopefully, a facade grant will be presented to you guys. It's been approved on our end. We just have to basically get you guys to, to vote on it and approve it. And then I have three more in the works and then one meeting tomorrow about someone else getting their facade grant. So that's going fabulously. I'm really excited about it. And that's really all I have. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Sarah. I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
And I printed out some of the Trackside Tunes and, and I've had this question for years.
Yes, sir.
I feel like it's a concern. With the Trackside Tunes, and I printed out the ad and we're advertising for Rolling Taco, are they a LaGrange business?
Which was, I think Rolling Taco came not July, but June.
Right.
I'm not sure where they're based out of. I have a committee that is able to coordinate all of that for me. Proceed, I'm sorry.
Well, there's Rolling Taco, Burger World, Holes Apple Brewing. Some of those, my concern is this, we've, we've got a lot of restaurants in LaGrange that are paying a lot of taxes. Employees are paying taxes. They're, they're, they're paying in a lot of money to the city of LaGrange and the city of LaGrange is, you know, one way to look at it is they're smacking them at these businesses in the face and saying, you know what, we're gonna bring in a bunch of food trucks and just come in for one day. Don't pay nearly the taxes that you all do. You don't have nearly the challenges and finding employees and all that. And we're gonna have this big, huge celebration and people are gonna spend their money at these food trucks. And then the food trucks are gonna take that money and go home. And meanwhile, all of the local businesses that sell tacos, like the Rolling Taco and burgers, like the Burger World and beer and alcohol, like the Holes Apple Brewing. It just, it doesn't seem fair and it doesn't seem right. And I printed off another one from LaGrange Arts Fest, All Things Fish. I mean, we have Long John Silver's right here in LaGrange. It's just one example of a place that serves fish. They have catfish sandwich, codfish sandwich, fish tacos, cod salad, cheese fries, basically everything that the local restaurants does. And my, my concern is representing a lot of these businesses as well as the citizens, you can see where it would be infuriating for a lot of these businesses to pay taxes. And that tax money goes to promoting businesses that are coming in from out of town that are, that don't have the challenges, that don't pay the taxes, that aren't there every single day, that they just show up, take the money and leave. And meanwhile, we, the local businesses lose parking too. So people are parking all around and then going over and spending the money on these food trucks and, and beer trucks and that kind of thing. And I know part of that's the EDC is kind of gonna help some of that that we're working on. But my suggestion would be one of the things, and I thought Don and them did a great job of it at Rail Fest. The trucks that they had in were more snacky type things, like, like there, there is a frozen lemonade on here, like a frozen lemonade, ice cream, chocolate popcorn, that kind of thing, that people can have something and they can snack, but they're not gonna be filled up to where they don't visit the local restaurants.
Right.
So I would, I would challenge the Main Street Board to have more of those type of vehicles if they're gonna have food trucks in. Just don't, you know, have something there for snacks and things, but don't, don't fill them up. People are only gonna eat one time. If it's a four hour event, they're not gonna have five different meals.
Right.
So that would be, that would be one thing that, that I would, I'd like to see some change on.
That was my first thought too. I was, when I first started, I was like, why are we gonna have all these food trucks if we have all these wonderful restaurants which would be profounded? And then it was kind of explained to me. So I'll, I'll let you know and then you tell me how you feel about that.
Okay.
Um, so the hope is that some of these different food trucks will have a following and will bring a different crowd of people in, even on top of the, the crowd there just for the event. I have personally traveled for a food truck before. I am ashamed to say it. So that's, that's kind of the hope is to, to draw just a different crowd of people in. And then the other benefit that it gives me selfishly is they give a 10% donation of their gross sales. So I can use that money to continue to do other things, continue to put that back into other events. So that's kind of why we're doing it. Although, like I said, I totally understand your point. It's, it's a very valid and I, I, I see where you're coming from.
What I would, what I'd like to see on that matter would be you bring your committee to our, one of our economic development meetings and I'd like for us to look into this further.
Okay.
Cause I, I, I'm not gonna say I totally agree with Jason, but I somewhat agree with Jason at this point because it just, you know, just to set a taco truck up in front of Ernesto's sort of goes against the grain of Ernesto's or Sophie. of Ernesto's sort of goes against the grain of Ernesto's or Sophie's or anything like that, you know? If I were them, I'd say, what in the world? You know, you're putting a taco truck out in front of my taco restaurant for?
I, I did, I did have them stop doing that, though.
So I would like for that to come to the Economic Development Committee, and let's try to, now, Oldham County Day, when we've got 10,000 people in town and they're backed out of Jason's Restaurant because they want to find something cool or something to eat, might be a different story. But maybe perhaps on these lesser, big drawing events, maybe we could get where we could patronize these restaurants much more and help them out.
I wanted to say something, because I was at the event, and y'all had very limited food trucks, and the lines were long. I was going to suggest that you need more food trucks, and then if the lines were like 30 minutes long, I would have just walked to the restaurant anyways, because the lines are too long. I don't think y'all had a good variety of food trucks.
I, I've learned over years of doing Oldham County Day, that number one, you're not going to please everybody all the time.
Yes.
But I know as I'm doing our food trucks, we try to do things that are not on, in downtown La Grange. We have, in fact, this year, we have Devilish Waffles, we have, oh gee, the brain is giving me, Frickle Pickle, you know, the ones that, that kind of come normally, and, but yet we don't have a taco truck.
Right.
And, and we don't have, you know, and if they go to Jason's, they're going to want to sit down and have a nice meal. Some people just want to come and have fair food.
Exactly.
So, you know, that, and, and we limit the number of, of food booths. So you're not going to please everybody. You just have to kind of juggle it.
Can I make a suggestion?
Where'd it come from?
On the advertisement, could we not put on there some of the local restaurants in addition to some of the food trucks, you know, to kind of share the love around? If we're going to have food trucks, great, you know, if, if we can try to have the local restaurants on there as well, I think that would be a good idea, to draw visitors there.
Yeah. And again, Donna was a perfect example of, of how to do it with the Rail Fest, because she had a lot of variety of things, but it were, the things were more grab a snack and then go find one of the places to sit down and actually eat. So it, it was perfect, and I think it was a perfect number and all that, too. So, so kudos to Donna, and you guys did a great job on that. And I would like to, I'd like to see, you know, if that, I get you want to have some things up there, but obviously, you don't want to have somebody standing in front of a bloom selling roses, selling individual roses, you know? You could understand how that would upset them. So anyway, I think, I think that's point made and I've said, but.
Okay.
I've got a, I've got a question, and maybe Jason can answer to this, too. When you have events like that, you know, we normally shut down maybe a street mostly. What if on those nights, restaurants like Jason's or Ernesto's or even Spots, the ice cream place, are we allowed to, you know, maybe allow them to put tables and things outside? Because that would be enticing for somebody to know, rather than going into a restaurant, they can sit out there for the night, you know? If you've got a band playing, you listen. But, you know, just a thought.
That is another thing.
You could work with them on.
Yes.
Maybe doing that.
All of my, all of my businesses, you know, retail or food industry, they're all welcome to set up at my event, and if they choose, if they do want to sell their food there, I would love that.
No, I'm talking like out in front of Jason's Restaurant. You know, we got parking spots, and I know we're limited with parking anyhow, but for that night, if.
If I closed down a street, absolutely, because I won't put, at, at any of Main Street events, if, if the street's closed, I will not put like a vendor booth in front of a restaurant.
Right.
Those are off limits. So those, those spaces are available if they did choose to set up a table outside. Is that, is, am I getting?
Yeah, but that's all I was wondering, was maybe that they could work that, that event as a, you know, a way to promote their business and get people outside more. People want to eat outside when they're at those types of things.
Sure.
Okay. Good dialogue. Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate you coming.
I have two more.
What I'd like to do, she's going to take about a five to eight minute break.
Can I?
We usually try to break at eight o'clock. Go ahead, Trey.
Can I ask you a few more questions?
Yes.
So you mentioned a book fair, and it's August 2nd, but where is it?
City Place Pavilion, too.
City Place Pavilion. Is it like all ages of books?
It is. So it is, like I said, Tony Acrey spearheads that. He's with Hydro Publishing. He only uses folks that have published within the past year, so it's recently published authors, and there's about 30 people that set up there.
Okay. My other question, I don't know if it's you or if it's Donna, so I apologize, but the car show, is that you or is that you? That's her?
It's not. Well, in the past, Main Street has promoted the car show. Since I've started, no one has ever reached out to me about promoting a car show. I don't know anything about it.
Okay. So part of the reason why, I guess I'm bringing this up, so I guess in another part of Kentucky, they don't, I guess maybe it turns into a car show afterwards, but they have like a car cruise, a cruise around town, your vintage vehicle, and people could see you, and, you know, all that kind of stuff. But I guess to help promote that, and I guess it really, I can't remember the city, so I guess it didn't stick in my mind. But they also, to promote all that, they had the Dukes of Hazzard vehicle jump over their town square or whatever. That's millions of views.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if people are going to, you know, come to their city for that. Maybe they will. Obviously, not to jump the town fountain, but.
Trey's going to jump his SUV.
We could jump over the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
Right on the road train or something.
But I guess it was to help kind of promote their car cruise and stuff like that, so maybe that's something to look into and see if there's interest.
I have no problem like helping them promote it. Like I said, I just don't know who to, no one's contacted me to look into that, so.
Okay.
But I'm all for promoting community events.
Summer's night, yes. Thank you. Yeah.
I was, I was thinking when the car landed, I just wondered if it was going to explode, you know, with gasoline in it, but maybe, maybe they didn't have enough in it to explode. But anyway, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
And I'd like to maybe suggest we take about a five to eight minute break.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
I, I appreciate it. You do a great job. I don't mean to be, be negative. You do a great job overall. I appreciate it. Thank you.
It's a long five minutes, Mayor. That was a long five minutes, Mayor.
There's markets all the time.
Yes.
You looking for beef?
Yes. Okay, let's go ahead and go back in the session. I want to tell the council Heather, Heather Woodcos got feeling bad, and so she's going to go on home. She just felt like she'd something had gotten to her for some reason, so I'd like to ask the city council to permit Cindy Alvano to take the rest of the minutes for tonight's meeting.
Motion to approve Cindy Alvano.
Motion made by Trey, second by Jason Kinser. Any discussion on that? If not, I was in favor of the motion, let me know. Senator, aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next up tonight is the famous Ms. Donna Sable.
Hey, I'm back. Okay.
How was Alaska?
Alaska was wonderful. I missed you guys, but it was wonderful. I got a long list of things, not a long list, but one of the things, I just had a conversation with Sarah here, my job is to promote the city every day, every day. My job is to promote the city every day, every day. And it's hard to promote a city when there's a lot of just ugliness everywhere. It's not, it's not fun. It's hard to shoot videos right now. I've got videos on stand, people that are gonna shoot videos for me with all the signage everywhere all over the city. And I'm just making a comment that it's affecting the job that I want to do this summer. And the other part is I do not, it's hard to promote the city when there are people in this council, outside this council, that are just ugly and disrespectful every day. I just want to make that comment and thank you for letting me make that. Jason, food trucks. So, Saturday night, Latasha, you were saying how the lines were so long. Well, what happened there is, and I, I made a quick decision there. A lot of people in those lines, it was so hot, just wanted something to drink. And so we ran and got the refreshment cart, filled it up with bottled waters. And if you notice, once we did that, it eliminated a lot of the long lines to the food trucks. So I just wanted to bring, a lot of people were in line just to get something cold to drink. But I do agree a lot with what Jason said, but one of the things that I really worked on during Rail Fest was to make sure that we brought snacky type food trucks in, but not too many. You want to force people to go to your restaurants. You want to have enough to cover the restaurant. As, as you know, Jason, with Rail Fest, you were bursting at the seams. So you want to have enough, but you've got to have a, an option for these guests too. So, speaking of guests, on July 10th, we've got guests coming in to the United States for the first time ever from the Netherlands, and they're coming to La Grange, Kentucky to see the train. So, I will be hosting them this next week. They're wanting to meet railroad people, they're interested, they, they've watched us on the rail fan cameras and they just cannot believe they are finally coming to the United States and to La Grange, Kentucky. So I'm excited about that. Project Guild's got a big week coming up. Just wanted to remind everybody, I think I left a little brochure there for you. And don't forget that the Rotary Pancake Breakfast will be on Saturday morning here from seven to 10 a.m.
And there will be a Entertainment Friday Night. Of course, we have a lot of competition with the fair and stuff, but with Rhythm and Wine Band.
Friday night, the city is hosting Rhythm and Wine Band. It's live music from seven to nine. There will be some food trucks there because they're already gonna be there for Oldham County Day.
And I, I've called them to see who can, who wants to open up Friday night. I believe Frickle Pickle is one of them. And I, but I can't remember off the top of my head who they are, but we have quite a few coming in.
So tourism, let me get to tourism. Alley Loop Festival is part of the Main Street program, but I'm the chair of it this year, or last year and this year. And this year, I'm gonna publicly announce right now that we're gonna have La Grange Idol coming up this year for Alley Loop Festival. So it's gonna be a lot of fun. We have a company that will be looking at everyone and just bringing us the best of the best. And we're getting some celebrity judges in here to help take care of, so we don't use local judges. So it should be a fun, fun event.
When is that again, Donna, I missed?
October 11th.
October 11th, okay.
Yes, and it's gonna be a lot of fun.
Sweet, and La Grange Idol.
Lot of things going on with that. I just want, the other thing I wanted to say about Saturday night, I forgot to say it, is we posted a video on the Alley Loop page and it got 11,000 views from our city on Saturday night. So I just, you know, if you think people aren't watching, they are, they, they love what we're doing. Getting back to tourism, we're working on a mural. I think I talked to you about that before. Hope to finalize the details on that at my next board meeting. The other thing that Rhonda and I have been working on is the EDC cups and signage. We've got the rough drafts on all of those, waiting on the final just the rules, just to make sure before we finalize everything. The cups will take us approximately three weeks to get in. 5,000 cups are gonna be 38 cents each, but if you only order 1,000, they go up to 60 some cents each. So we're trying to order, we'll try to order 5,000 at a time to get the best price.
How many places are inside the EDC that can sell alcohol?
Six.
Six, okay.
So you'll have 119, Sophia's, Madeline's, Ernesto's.
Bourbon and Ale.
Bourbon and Ale and Gallery at Gatewood.
Oh, and Gallery, okay.
Rhonda, what's the cup, cup, how much are the cups and how many restaurants going to get, restate that, please?
So the cups, we'll order 5,000 at a time, just to get the best price that we possibly can get. They'll be colored on both sides. One side will have the rail logo and the other side will have a QR code where you can actually look at all the rules and, and the boundaries. There'll be a map also connected to that QR code.
Okay, my question is, say 119 Mangis, 500 cups, like day one. Do they, are they allowed to try to make money back off their 500 cups and then pay you back? Or do they, or they suppose, or they're even gonna make them pay it up front?
So, today at our meeting, so we've discussed giving each of those businesses the first 500 cups. And then beyond that, they would pay me the cost of those cups and tourism would keep them in stock. So, I think that's a fair thing to do. A lot of places are charging, you know, what, 50 cents or whatever, but we're just not gonna do that. We're just gonna cover the cost, shipping, anything like that. Right now, I've got free shipping for quite a while. Big counts, La Grange Tourism has in our regular account 20,693 dollars and six cents. We have a CD that's 105,988 dollars and four cents. We're busy, and that's all, I think that's all I have.
What about, what about that mural on the bottom side of the
Southeast.
Palm shop, I thought there was supposed to be a mural going on the building, you know?
We ran into a couple problems, it's, it's still ongoing, but I have to get that chipped paint scraped. There's more to it than just putting the mural up, it's, it's, but it's going to be up there eventually, it's beautiful. I did call the state on our La Grange Main Street sign on the interstate, have you seen that? So then you get off at the Parkway and it tells you to turn right to go to the Historic District area. And then you get to the four way there and there's no signs. And I found that next sign is up on Allen Lane, close to Covenant Church. So I think they installed it in the right, wrong place, so I've reached out to them to talk to them about that, that sign.
Did they mean, say, exit 20? Or did they put 22?
No, it had to be exit 20, we lost our place on exit 22 because of the new Parkway. There was not enough footage there to put that sign in. But I want them to come down Commerce, not Allen Lane. I want them to turn right on Commerce and come into the city that way. Cause that was, the goal is to have that mural there, like welcome, you know, to La Grange and, and we would be able to get through to downtown La Grange.
Well, just make up your own and put it there Commerce Parkway and say Historic District, this way.
I, I, you know, I can always do it and ask for forgiveness.
There's no one's gonna bother it, I don't think.
Have Joe stand down there and point that away, that away.
But the one on Allen Lane, I went up there cause thinking I could move it and it's in concrete.
Yeah, well, they don't ever get that far, so be it, but just put one there right hand Commerce Parkway, say Historic District, that way.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions for me?
I don't, unless the council does, thank you very much, Donna.
Okay.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Oh, I hope to see you all. This is a city event, I'd like to see all the council members show up and have fun at night. We'll do a little dancing, have fun, thank you.
Okay, let's go to item 10, La Grange Utilities Report. It has Scott Treese, but that's not Scott Treese unless he changed his looks.
Not Scott Treese.
Can we take another 10 minutes? Just kidding.
Please give us your name, just because we'd like to know who our person standing there with Scott Treese is tonight.
All right, I'm Josh Rom.
Yes, sir.
So Scott, I think Scott sent you all the financial report, did everybody get that? So project updates, on the Fourth Street Rehab, it's kind of underway, it's kind of a mess. I know some of you all are having to deal with it. They are going as fast as they can, doing the best they can with the the job that it's, it's, it's turning into. Oldham Reserve Sewer Project, they have made it into Lakewood Valley, so getting pretty close to starting on the pump station, not very far from starting on that. The Courts Water Project, it's going out to bid. We should be opening bids here in July. And the First Street Water Project, we are in design right now, so should be getting that back here soon. And that's pretty much it for what Scott has. If anybody's got any questions, open for questions.
Have you looked into by, or Donna's offices at 309, the tracks there, there's standing water around those tracks. Somebody said they looked into it, but it's, I walked by the other day and it was 95 degrees out, it hadn't rained for a while and there was standing water there, so there's some, if, if it's not a water leak, then it's gotta be a spring, but I don't think a spring would be up that high.
Yeah, I've looked there, I've personally looked there multiple times, like, cause the only water line we have is literally on the other side of the road, and then the water meter that's for her
Right.
that, it literally goes all the way over to Kentucky, that service line. So like, there's, I don't know if the train's going by or possibly just something leaking off. Cause Trey's called me before and it's, there's been mud there before and it's wet mud.
Yeah.
And then I go there the next day and it's dry.
There is, I know a spring in that area and I'm sure that the train going over that is doing kind of a pumping action to, yeah, and, and that, I've, I've seen that before over the years.
Yeah, cause there's, like I said, there's like a
It's more of a CSX issue.
Right, there's like a 60 foot in there, like window, no water.
Is it still standing water, Donna? Have you, have you noticed that it's still standing, still standing water?
Yeah.
We may want to get that to CSX
Yeah.
Attention.
Yeah, we've looked at it numerous times and like I said, we'll go there one day and it'll be dry, the next day it'll be wet. It'll be muddy and then it won't be muddy and it's, yeah, we have looked into it, Jason.
Yeah, I watched the train go the other day, I watched the locomotive go over.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Take some, take some videos.
Yeah.
Take videos and send them to CSX.
Good luck, good luck in somebody out there.
If you are looking at La Grange Financial Statement, anyone see that? I'd like to get a motion
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Joe.
A second.
Second by Trey, any discussion? If not, I was in favor of the motion, let me know, say an aye.
Aye.
The reason, reason I want you all to approve this statement is because by ordinance, La Grange Utility Commission has the ability to raise your rates, what, 5% each year?
Yes, sir.
5%?
Yes, sir.
And that's by ordinance, so now if they need to exceed 5% rate on a customer, then we would, they would have to come to us to get that approved.
Yes, sir.
So that's the reason I want the council to be familiar with their financials, because there may be a day they come to us and say, hey, we need six and a half percent this year for these projects or something, so I just want the council to be aware of that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Joshua, thank you, buddy, appreciate you.
Thank you.
You did a great job. Okay, let's go to item 11, Introduction with Ordinance Number 12, Series 2025 for a First Reading. Katie Becto, you want to come up as HR Director? And, and between yourself and Beach, you can come up and please explain what we're trying to do with the personnel handbook.
So I'm gonna kind of take this for Katie. I've been more involved with this process than, than, than Katie has. It, it is handbook related, but directly to the ordinance that we introduced to the Ordinance Committee probably a couple months ago. Laura, this is specifically the ordinance that we requested to repeal the city's percentage of health insurance premium. So on the advice of council and Beach, I'll have, have you chime in where you feel needed? Is that just to make sure that we don't have anything that pops up in the, in the future, we repealed every ordinance that preceded that. Just to make sure that we've got everything covered in that particular ordinance, cause there was reference to, you know, a couple prior older versions. So Beach just rewrote the ordinance to incorporate all those various versions and any other items that may pop up.
Before Beach goes, Laura, as Chair of the Committee, this was taken up with the Ordinance Committee, correct?
It was, yes. The committee was in agreement with repealing previous ordinances related to the percentage that the city was required to pay of health insurance.
Okay, who would like to explain what a previous council put in place specifically? So folks will understand what, what actually we're doing here in relation to a obligation that was put into ordinance that the city council would have to honor in the event that they didn't have enough money to do it? Or that was really the issue, did you realize that?
Well, my understanding of it was that prior to now, there were a series of ordinances that would say that the city was obligated to pay, for example, 100% of employee medical costs, 95% of employee medical costs, with the remaining being paid for by the employee. As health insurance has become increasingly expensive over time and employers all around have had to really look hard at what employers can afford to pay and what employees can afford to pay. It doesn't make sense to have a certain percentage mandated by ordinance. It makes more sense for the city to look at what is affordable and what is the best plan that they can get for the employees.
Okay, that's, that's, that's good, that's what I wanted to, make sure the council understood and the audience as well, okay? Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
Mr. Craigman, are you anything further on that?
Yes, really, this was not necessary, but because an argument, because the last ordinance we had expressly said, all ordinances amending all prior ordinances relating to the personnel handbook are repealed and replaced. However, there's always an argument that somebody could make that maybe one of them wasn't. So rather than picking and choosing which ones we're going to repeal, because they've already been repealed, we just repealed all of them that had ever been documented in the Table 13 of the Ordinance Code, which is Personnel Policy. So they are now officially all repealed, even though they were already appealed before, so now they're double repealed. So they should, nothing that was written before is enforceable.
Okay, so that being said, I think we placed into the record a year or so ago by municipal order? To get this, get this accomplished, or no?
We can't repeal ordinances by municipal order, that's why this is an ordinance.
Okay, okay, all right.
In the future, in the future, because a personnel manual should not be an ordinance, it should be an administrative document. And administrative documents are not And administrative documents are not needed to be laws. They just are just handbooks, just like the Police Code or something, so. That's just a bad practice that passed. It's not just LaGrange, it's, everybody used to do it that way. And it just became too ord, too burdensome to have ordinances passed just to say, we're gonna change paragraph 16 of, uh, one section somewhere. So in the future, uh, administrative changes will be done by means of a municipal order. A municipal order, again, is a cross between a resolution and an executive order. Resolutions have no executive power. They have no authority. They're just opinions. And so the, the city council passes resolutions and the mayor passes executive orders, but he can't pass executive orders that affect the laws. And so he's, uh, a municipal order is a resolution that is also signed off by the mayor. And that's, it's, it can be done in one hearing, uh, one, uh, motion. And, um, so that'll be what we do in the future.
Okay. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank everyone for that.
Mayor, I had one question for Beach, if I could, uh, cause I know you mentioned double repeal, um, and it looks like June 3rd of 24. My understanding is the new handbook, I guess, was unveiled and then everything prior to that relating to personnel policies was kind of wiped away. Is that right?
Right.
So what is the point of the double repeal? If, if that very clearly says it's all repealed previously, why do we need to do it again?
Well, because, uh, some older employees still seem to think that that was the rule. And so we just wanted to make sure that that's not the rule. That the rule, it, from now on, it was, some people argued that, hey, well, I can't, and there's a certain equitable argument on that, Jason. It's, it's somebody might say that make a fairness ordinance, like, hey, you know, when I came here, this is what I was told the deal was. And then they in turn may have told all the people that they hired, here's the deal, we pay 100%, you know? And that hasn't been the deal. It's, uh, it's been what we, we pay what we can afford. And what the, what the company that sells us the policy, uh, says is our share. And it's certainly a very generous share, uh, but it's, it's just, we can't afford to do 100% anymore. And, and, you know, so that's, go ahead.
Do all of the ordinances listed in Table 13 from 1997 to 2015 have anything to do with, uh, insurance premium payments? Are we saying all of these ordinances has something to do with insurance premium payments?
No, are these, these, no, these, uh, some of them, some of these ordinances, uh, amend sick leave policy, requirements for vacation leave, that kind of stuff. These are all, ever since the, the 1997, uh, Employee Handbook was documented, and that's as far back as our, uh, records go. This goes through about two or three handbooks. There was a new, like, if you look at 2015, there was a whole new handbook that was adopted in, uh, 2015. And that one repealed all the ordinances prior to that. There was another handbook that was adopted, uh, somewhere else, and it appealed all the, repealed all the policies before that. So this is like a quadruple repeal, just to make sure nobody can say, oh, what about this old ordinance, you know, and say, well, you know, it wasn't, someone might argue that it was not expressly repealed, so now they have.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, so we consider that, folks, as the first reading tonight. So let's go to item 11A. What was the item we added in the, uh?
Oh, that, yeah, that was.
Entertainment. Okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
That was the clarification of, remember when we created the, uh, exceptions for entertainment? That there would no be, there would not be any business license tax for, there was a, a question was raised because of the use of the word temporary in there, that it might mean a person who's temporary, but actually works every, every, every week or something, is not truly temporary. So it was a unnecessary, uh, uh, to have that in there. Uh, and so we're taking, we're amending that ordinance, uh, to, uh, establish that the word temporary is being deleted.
Okay, and that's, um, is that the first reading of amendment?
Right.
Okay, we have a public hearing on it next month.
That was amendments, uh, 13.
Okay.
Uh, dash 2025. And there was also, while we're at it, there was, uh, a, redrawing, uh, for, I think, uh, for the, uh, Entertainment District, the, the area of the, of the, um, Entertainment District Common Area.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on. We're talking about two different things.
Okay, I'm just trying to get my things out of the way.
I know.
If you don't want to move to that yet.
No, 11A, that was about the, uh, temporary or the permanent entertainer.
Right.
That was that.
Right.
Now, if we're finished with 11A, we'll go to 11B, that we're talking about the.
11, 11A was to get rid of all the old historic, the old ordinances.
Now, that's 11, period. That's 11, period.
Okay, okay, so 11A.
Was what we added with the agenda.
All right.
And what's, what 11A was that? The one about the entertainment?
Correct.
Okay, so we passed that. We've already had a, we're gonna have a second reading and a public hearing on that next month.
I got a question about that.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Temporary, as far as it being temporary, is there a number of temporary times that they can do this? That's what I'm curious about. What, I mean, what do you consider temporary?
There ain't, there ain't gonna be any temporary more. Anybody comes here and wants to entertain, just go for it. They're not gonna be charged.
Kenny, that's exactly the reason why they wanted the word temporary out, because Temporary Vendor Ordinance says temporary doesn't really mean temporary. Temporary, if you, if you're temporary like 10 times in a year, you're no longer considered temporary. So there are some people that may play music 11 times. And they weren't allowed to fall under the Temporary Vendor Ordinance anymore. So now, now the question was, can we just get rid of the word temporary? And it's neither temporary nor permanent, or just if you're an entertainer, you don't pay a business tax.
Because you're playing at that business. Because you're, like, if I wanted to go play at Ernesto's or Jason's or.
Right.
El Napol or whatever.
Right.
So if I want to go there every weekend. That's considered
If you're.
Lot of business.
If, okay, under your, if you're the musician and you want to play there at Ernesto's every weekend, you, the city would get the entertainment, would get it, would get the business license tax from Ernesto.
Right. But what I'm saying is, I, so there's 52 weeks in a year.
Right.
If I want to go to Ernesto's every Saturday and make a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That's $52,000 a year that I made just to do whatever.
All right.
Well, I thought we put the temporary thing in there, because if I go there 12, 13, 14 times a year, that's temporary. If I go there every weekend, that's basically a job every week. I'm, I'm going there every week, whether I go to Jason's to play music, whether I go there to have trivia night, whether I go there to have bingo. I'm running a business. That's not, that's not temporary. That's every single week. If I go there once a month, oh, that's temporary. If I go there 15 times a year, that's temporary. I mean, if, if that's the case, why don't we just say, I temporarily cut my grass six months out, I'm serious. We can play this, I mean, I mean, you can play this any way you want, cause if, if I temporarily mow my grass six months out of the year, why do I have to have a business license? I'm temporarily mowing it six months out of the year.
Right.
But if I put an ordinance in here to say, okay, you want to come play bingo, you want to have trivia, you want to have karaoke, you want to play music, you want to play there once a month, that's, to me, that's a hobby. That's temporary. If I'm playing there every single week, then you're gonna have a business license, just like Latasha and Jason and anybody else that runs a business, because look on, I mean, let's just say a thousand dollars a month, or a thousand dollars a week. It's $52,000. That's a job. There's people that don't make $52,000 a year. So now they're using Ernesto's, they're using Jason's, they're using El Napol, they're using whoever as a business to run karaoke, to run trivia. So I would say that we leave temporary, we set a guideline of saying if you want to play 12 or 15 times a year, that to me is a hobby. That's temporary. If I'm gonna go there every month, that's a job. I can go do that every week. I can, I can do that and make 52,000. I'm just saying, I'm a low end.
That's, that's, that's all to be discussed at the, when we have our second reading.
Gotcha.
We have people come here. But in the meantime, uh,
Well, that's just a.
The argument is for public policy purposes.
Yeah.
There's an encouragement of tourism by having people here.
Sure.
Cause an entertainer attracts people. Whereas a mower, a grass mower doesn't really attract tourists.
Well, if my grass is this high, nobody's gonna want a couple of grains. I'm just saying.
Hey, Stephanie Windsor, come up front, please. Could you, we, we talked about this, uh, I think, I think it was talked about up at the, um, KLC meeting with, uh, four or five different, uh, you know, this came up somewhere along the way about temporary and, and the issue was, uh, so and so, is only temporary, so he's going, he or she's gonna pay a business license, they're not full time. Could you elaborate on that to lead us into next month's discussion here?
So was that something recently, are you talking about?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We, this temporary word that, that, you know, I think the, the thought was the council missed, missed, missed something within the first reading and it's, I think it's the word temporary.
You know?
I remember the conversations of it during the Ordinance Committee when we talked about temporary, because the word was in there and I wanted to make sure that we were clear on what the word temporary meant. And Beach was the one that brought it up, that it's listed, there is a definition under Temporary Vendor of what temporary means, which is 30 consecutive days or 15 times in a calendar year. And that was the temporary definition we were gonna go through, which is what the ordinance was passed as for temporary entertainers.
So the, the, the number of times was left out of our ordinance, it, but we left temporary in there?
We didn't not, we did not define temporary.
Okay.
Um, when we were discussing this ordinance. Um, and there was a discussion out in the community about, well, what is temporary? And so we brought it back to Ordinance Committee. And a decision was made to leave the word temporary out. Because of the benefit that entertainers are providing to our citizens in the, the community, bringing get, uh, business into the restaurants, into our community, um, we decided that we didn't want to hash out the particulars of what is temporary, what is not. It's more important to bring the tourism in. And these, these entertainers are still operating under the business license of the establishment where they're playing or they're performing.
Right, but if you're doing that more than, like I said, if you're doing that every week, that's not temporary.
Most of the entertainers will tell you that it's not a hugely lucrative thing.
Well, and I know that most of the entertainers that do that are getting paid cash, so that money that they're getting paid, that's not, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but that's not rolling into when the restaurant applies for their business license, that's not income that they're also requiring to list as a grocery receipt, because that's something that they are paying out.
Sure. I just.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll get more discussion on it in our public hearing and the council will think, think about the issues for another month and then we'll take it up, okay?
Okay.
All right. Okay, uh, let's go to 11B. And that was the EDC, uh, Beach, on, on the map?
Oh. Okay, this, this just goes back to the, uh, municipal order concept of, uh, the ordinance that we passed last month. Had, uh, the electric, the, uh, Entertainment Destination Center Ordinance that we passed last month had a, uh, map that was ambiguous as to, uh, one or two intersections. And so this is a revised and, uh, slightly edited area here to clarify, in particular, the, the area around the Train Museum. Uh, on, on, they're, they're, uh, the first one hadn't really clarified whether or not you could walk up and down the right side of the street. And so, uh, we wanted to make sure that if for safety purposes, that when you're crossing over Cedar Avenue to get to the Train Museum and that area of town, which we last year changed the zoning on the right side of the, of Main Street, also known as Jericho Road, that, that area was to be rezoned as Commercial Neighborhood District. So if, if somebody along that area of the Co, Road wanted to participate in this, uh, in, in, in the, uh, common area, uh, they would have been precluded. So this now includes that area and, um, also includes, uh, the area, uh, on north of, uh, Jefferson, where the city, uh, the county's, uh, uh, Fiscal Court Building and the re, remodeled church, uh, which is intended to be a community center for entertainment. So, uh, you won't get, uh, you wouldn't be in violation to cross the street there.
Okay, does everyone understand that? Okay, this is being done by municipal order?
Right, this is being done by municipal order, which would require one council member to make a motion to pass a resolution.
Motion.
It would take the mayor.
Oh, we gotta wait till a second?
Motion made by Jason Kenyon. Would there be a second?
I'll second it. We need one editing though, where it says on the 7th day of July, it just needs to say 7TH. It says 7ST right now. I think.
7th Street.
Yeah.
7th Street. Okay, we have a motion in the second with Jason Paylor's correction. Anyone have any further discussion on this?
Why was it stopped where it was on Washington? How come it wasn't extended down? You know, I guess if you wanted a donut, or even if you wanted some pizza, or you had a pizza and you had a beer and wanted to walk uptown, why wasn't it extended?
Trey, I think I can answer that. It needs to, the ABC wants it to be a clear and concise, uh, one, basically one unit. Uh, and that's what the, uh, the mayor of Bellevue said too. He said they, you know, they, they wanted to do like a leg off this way to include these couple businesses and a leg off that way. And ABC won't approve that. It needs to be one clear boundary.
Right.
Uh, going around. That's, that's part of it.
I don't disagree, but how come this, whatever, uh, view this is, why isn't it just a square or something to that effect? So why isn't it just extended down to like Dairy Queen? I mean, it's two more blocks.
I think the idea was the tourism, uh, area is Main Street, so it was basically getting in Main Street, uh, as the initial, from, from the, uh, Railroad Museum down to Springs Park.
Main, yeah, Springs Park and Main Street.
That's, that's, it's the tourism area. I mean, yeah, I'm sure, uh, cattlemen's and all that would like to be included, but we, we gotta call it somewhere.
I hear what you're saying, but tourism's supposed to promote the whole city, not just a couple of streets.
But that makes it a lot larger and harder to, harder for them to.
I agree. I hear what you're saying.
And tourism does, Trey, but there's, um, basically the tourist district of the Main Street. of the Main Street District of La Grange is kind of the product. Uh, and, and feel free to jump in here, Don, if you want. It's kind of the product that, uh, tourism is selling. It's, it's, uh, here's, here's what we've got. You know, the, the museums and everything are in this area. I mean, there's-
I, I agree. However, it's the whole city. So I'm, I'm just going to say part of tourism is also supposed to be Eagle Creek Golf Course, which is way on the other side of the city limits, but I'm just-
I, I just want to make a quick comment. EDCs were initially there, there to bring people to your downtown areas. That's, that's the goal of EDCs, to get people in your downtown areas. I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay.
I'm just asking questions. I mean, I don't really think it's appropriate for people to be playing basketball and drinking beer, but we've included that in this section. Just making a comment.
Okay. And that, you're certainly welcome to do that. So we have a motion and a second. Are we finished discussing? Okay?
I have, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, if we start the map with this and then, you know, we decide it's manageable, it's working well, is it a situation where we could expand the boundaries at a later point in time?
Sure. We can do anything we want to.
ABC will limit that somewhat.
Unless ABC has a say-so in it.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. If there's, if, if it would be a lot of hoops to jump through to do something.
There will be. I mean, to, once we, this is the beginning of the hoop process here. And so we had to have something to send the ABC as to what our area is, and this is what evolved. Uh, if we can't just willy-nilly say, oh, now we're going to throw in this or cut, take this one out. Uh, I'm, I don't know what the exact process is. Donna's spending a lot of time figuring out and Heather as to applying, but I think the process is about, what, six weeks, Donna, is that it takes? To, or is it longer?
Sixteen to ninety days.
Ninety days to get- All right, so my-
The process is sixty to ninety days, depending on how busy they are. Um, but what we have to do is have everything ready, because they will come and actually walk this area. They, they will take a hard look at our area. Um, and I, I, I see what you're saying, Trey, but I, I think it's too early to extend it that far.
Well, to her point, I mean, is it better to have a bigger hoop now or have a bigger hoop later?
The only restaurant that you would pull in from that area would be Hometown Pizza. That's the only person, the only restaurant in that area that has a liquor license. I don't think Pizza Hut does. I'm not sure. I've not been there, but, um, so you're talking about one more restaurant in that area, if, if they chose to participate.
Can I ask, I guess, why you're there and you brought it up too? So how is the Gatewood able to participate? Do they sell food as well or just alcohol?
Just alcohol.
And they don't have to have a percentage or anything? You just-
Understanding they don't. That ordinance was amended years ago.
I'm just playing devil's advocate.
They might be able to tell you.
Bourbon and ale doesn't have a food requirement either.
Yeah.
They can close down their kitchen and just sell straight alcohol all the time, same thing.
Okay. I'm just playing devil's advocate here. So, I mean, there is a liquor store that's literally right on the boundary of the, the red. So could they participate if they wanted?
No. They could not.
Why couldn't they?
Uh, they don't have the proper licensing.
But if they requested the license, then they could.
Well, they, I seriously doubt that could happen.
Yeah, they don't sell by the drink, so they can't.
I know right now, but they could, right? I mean, if Gatewood can, I don't know why this place couldn't apply for the same.
Gatewood's a different, it's a, it's an entertainment and the licensing is totally different.
I, I don't know why they couldn't apply for-
And I'm not even sure Gatewood's going to, uh, you know, I'm not sure.
That's, that's in the ABC. You do, you just got to look at ABC.
Chief can probably tell you more about that license than I-
One, two, and all that, so. But no, they couldn't. The liquor store cannot be in it, because they can't sell, you can't crack open a beer and, uh, they can't sell you an open beer. They can't sell you a Long Island.
It wouldn't be a beer. They'd be selling you your cup.
Right, right, but no, they cannot.
Well, they don't sell in, I guess-
The reason Gatewood could, could is because they are, um, they're a wedding, uh, entertainment venue. The reason, um, bourbon and ale can do it is because, uh, Tom Clements found a loophole where if there's, uh, a historic, historic building, uh, and it's, it's an attraction, historic attraction, then they don't have to have any food. They can sell straight alcohol. So that's why there's no food to alcohol, uh, ratio.
I think that's how he first got it, but that, we cut that up years ago from a council perspective.
So what about like, you said that a liquor store can't serve liquor?
They don't have a license to do that.
But they could get one?
They don't.
But what, no, I think what he's trying to say is, like, I can go to Cox's Liquor, Evergreens, whatever it is, they've got a, they've got a bar right there that I can order a drink in a liquor store. I can drink right there at a liquor store. Is that what you're asking? Like, if they wanted to put a bar?
They put a bar and they could-
That's what I'm saying.
Get those proper licenses.
They'd have to build a bar, though, basically.
Right. So if they did that, let's just say, a year from now, they wanted to do that, could they then be at it?
I, I guess, so like, their property's touching the red line at
Right.
Washington and LT Doughty Lane, so they are technically in the district, correct?
Same as Blooms Florist could build a bar and become a bar if they wanted to. So in that, in that way, yes, the liquor store could build a bar, the same as Blooms could decide to become a bar, uh, or anybody else. But as is, no, they cannot. What are you grinning about over there, Trey?
I, I think we agree that they could. That's, I mean, I'm just saying, hey, why don't we have more businesses of, in, involved, but...
See, you-
I don't know if we can answer that question, though, like it-
You will have license, places like our restaurants. And you have participation, which is our merchants down Main Street. It's, uh, could be City Hall here. It could be the Tourism Office. That, that's where you'll have, uh, participation. You're going to participate in this EDC ordinance, and there's a form for that. And we're having an open house on that on Thursday, I believe, from eleven to seven.
Okay. Okay, Trey, are you?
I guess, I, one other question or comment. Have, have all the property owners or business owners, like any of them? I'll just say I'm Blooms or whatever, and I'm like, oh, maybe I do want to get in on this. Have they all been notified to come to your meeting?
Yes, I sent a group message. They have a merchant's page.
Okay.
That goes directly to them, and I asked them all to, you know, come. But I think we're having it from eleven to six, so it gives an opportunity for, you know, for them to come at any time of the day to, uh, fill out the forms and just, uh, see what, uh, see what it's all about.
So like hyper, hypothetically, like Copper Oning should be invited to that, right?
Definitely.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Like every, everyone that's listed on that merchant page, I send them official invite through there.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I don't have everyone's email addresses, although I'm working on that, uh, so that I can communicate better. But, uh, through Sarah, I was able to go through the merchant meeting.
Okay.
At that point, who doesn't show up, then Rhonda and I will pay them a visit. We're, we're going to go and see, visit everyone. I just thought it'd be better to do it. And all the groups, and then trying to visit every business in, in, in the district.
Everybody hears the same message. Everybody hears the same message.
Right.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second. No more further discussion. All who's in favor of the motion, let me know. I'm saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
You want to pose? All passes. Okay. All right, let's move to, uh, some good news. The introduction of Steve Mahoney and Steve LaGrange as new Parks Director. I'd like to, uh, uh, bring Steve forward. He's, uh, been with us since July first as our new Parks and Rec Director. Uh, I think he got his vow tonight. I was hoping it went home in the pockets on Friday. Um, I will say that, uh, myself and Trey Camer and Katie Beckto, I believe we had five different applicants. And, uh, Trey, myself, and Katie interviewed all three of them all together. And after our consensus to pick a person whom we thought had multi-talents and trying to bring some new thoughts to our city and, and promote our cities and all we have going on, we thought that Steve would be the man. So Trey, before he goes forward, would you like to add to that?
Only other thing to, uh, add to, and Katie can provide better detail, but, um, wasn't there like a hundred applicants or something? And it, a hundred and ten? And then it got cut down to five? And so there's a lot of interest, um, but five were, uh, were brought in to meet and answer questions and go through all that stuff, so.
Well, I'm appreciative this worked out, because I was going to get harmonica and check out the local restaurants, start playing down there for the full-time gig, right? So anyway, local farm boy from Trimble County, Kentucky. Uh, I have four kids between my lady and I, all between ages of twenty-one, twenty-six. Two are through college and two more are still there. One's still in the basement. Um, spent some time working in a not-for-profit for a center for adults with mental illness. We built that from the ground up, did that for about seven years, and then transitioned into education. Spent several years as an athletic director at the middle school level, and then recently transitions to LaGrange Elementary for the last few years, your boys and your niece. So they may not know that I'm coming back next year, but I'm not coming back next year. I'm here at the park. So anyway, I'm excited to be here. Uh, work with Spalding University. I broadcast, I'm the voice of the Golden Eagles. I broadcast all their games. And, uh, I'm a firm believer in public service. And so what brings me to LaGrange? Why am I in love with LaGrange? First job was at the Walmart. First house I bought was in, used to be Cedar Springs, I think it's Willow Woods now. And, uh, my first child was born here in ninety-nine, so LaGrange comes close to heart. So why did I say yes? I put together a presentation, and this is on my third day on the job. They threw a fireworks party to welcome me. So I have this video presentation. For those watching on YouTube, we will drop this on the Parks and Rec's social media page after this meeting. So I'd like for y'all to watch the screens. So the one, one of my passions is storytelling. And I absolutely believe that everyone has a story and all cities have a story. And in my mind, the Departments of Park and Recreation contribute to the citizens, to their story and their life. I know at a time when I was a single father with my three own, we relied on everything in communities. That was our entertainment. It's kind of the Buc-E's theory in my mind. If you provide something that's pretty interesting, and if it's a clean environment, you're going to show up. I mean, you'll wait sixty miles to go to the restroom to show up at that Buc-E's, right? You'll wait. Now, when you're lured in there, you wind up giving some money and spending and buying this and that and the other. And that's my goal to bring to the Parks and Rec Department, to provide a product to our citizens that is clean. And if we can lure the folks in, then that will trickle down to the businesses down the street. That's what I, that's what I'm hoping for. That's the goal. Um, I know on the counter already, I never met Stephen Hall. Seems like he did a great job developing some programs. I worked with Christian for about a day and a half, and I know they have upcoming pickleball, open gym nights, groups such as the music players, the line dancers, the quilters, skate nights. In my mind, as we progress on through this, I want to make sure we incorporate some day events. Coming from LaGrange Elementary, we have four hundred fifty-nine kids. Only saw like eleven of those students here on Friday night or Saturday night. I don't know why that is. They're the closest. Thirty-eight percent of that student comes from Spanish-only speaking families. I know queso, that's about it. So what, what are we lacking there? We had so many kids here Saturday, and I saw eleven. So what are we missing out on? So in the future, I want to look some day programs and incorporate those families that are local. I hope my connection with the school will help grow that bond here next door. Try to do some camps, some family moving night, movie nights, work with maybe the high school fishing teams to get our lakes and ponds up to speed, get them cleaned up. And then my goal for you all, once I get my emails and phones and all that jazz all set up, you'll have my contact information, and every Sunday night, you'll get a weekly schedule of what's happening in the Parks and Rec, and that will go out to the public on our Facebook. Just give me a couple of weeks to get myself going. This is only like day two, I think. So that's my goals for the park system, and I'm appreciative to be here. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members. Thank you, neighbors. And I look forward to serving LaGrange in this capacity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Steve. Uh, let's move on to thirteen, our directors for tonight. I have two directors here tonight with our city bus department and everything that Katie's doing and also our police chief. So, uh, Katie, would you like to speak first?
Well, he's a hard one to follow. That was high energy. But I'm Katie Beckto. I'm the Transportation Supervisor, as long as the, um, I also do, um, HR Director and I do payroll for the city. Um, I'm here just to talk about, a little bit about the bus today. Um, first off, we did hire a new driver, a part-time driver. First off, we did hire a new driver, a part-time driver. We had had Harry Goldberg retire recently. And we have a new driver named Mike Billick. So we have now, we have two Mikes. He started officially today on his own, did a great job. He's been training for the last month. So he will be driving part-time in the afternoons. Next point I have is we just went through a triennial audit on July 2nd. Cindy Alvano was present, Mayor John Black, myself, and Lisa Long were part of this audit that was put on by the FTA and TARC. TARC had some representatives in. Chris Ward was the Director of Grants and Capital Programs. Russ Greenleaf, Greenleaf was my contact with TARC. He's the Project Manager for Grant Applications. And then Mary Howard, she was the contracted representative for FTA. FTA actually hired her to come on board and do all their audits. So this is the first time I've worked directly with her. She is from the group called the Tuba Group. I went through a triennial audit three years ago. So they do an audit over the past three years of anything pertaining to transportation. And it was much different this round. When she came in, it was a lot of more questions, putting us in scenarios. How do we handle situations? She also reviewed items like my maintenance plan, my records for maintenance, our drug policy, making sure that we have an up-to-date and accurate MRO certificate for those random drug screens. She looked very detailed at my Title VI binder and making sure I was in compliance with ADA regulations, that we had all postings that are supposed to be posted on our website, on our vehicles and in our office. She went ahead and wanted to make sure we had translation, translation language lines in place. We do transport quite a few of different nationalities, different language, Hispanics. A lot of, I would say at least half of our population is from Hispanic descent. So we always need to make sure we have ways that we can communicate with them. Looked over our monthly invoicing as well as making sure that our DOT inspections on all of our vehicles are up to date. So she went through a lot of documentation. There were things that they did not do this year. Three years ago, they went to our bus garage down at LaGrange Utilities and actually inspected our vehicles, made sure that our lifts were working, that all of our documentation was on the buses. This year, they didn't do that. I was surprised. But I think overall, and I'm sure Cindy and the mayor can attest, I think the trial went well. We haven't gotten our results yet. But I feel like we did exceptionally well at our audit, and we should know probably in the next week or two about that. And last but not least is our, we talked last time about our FTA grant application. We are now moving away from TARC. Not our choice, but we have now been put as, we are going to be under the Federal Transit Authority and the National Data Transit Department. With that being said, we have been working on an FTA grant application. It's a 165-page grant application, my first one ever. I want to give credit to Lisa Long, who is not here tonight. She is our administrative assistant. She has worked very hard with me on this application. She's very good at finding things on the Census Bureau website and putting spreadsheets together for me for this grant application. So I did want to give her some credit for helping me with that. We are in the home stretch, hoping that in the next week, everything will be submitted. And we should know within two weeks if we are going to be awarded grant funding for our buses this year. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Katie about anything she's talked about tonight or anything otherwise?
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Appreciate you coming in tonight.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, Chief Collette, he's gonna bring us a report from the LaGrange Police Department Operations.
Good evening. Thanks for having me here. First off, start with the June 2025 CAD activities for that month. It was 1,213 different CAD activities since we're at the halfway mark for the year. That puts us at 5,735 for the dispatch type, run types that were the highest numbers during June, where burglar alarms and non-injury collisions were up with the nice weather, suspicious vehicle and suspicious person complaints, thank goodness for our alert citizens, and welfare checks, which always are up there. Once those are concerned about their neighbors or relatives, we're doing an awful lot of welfare checks. On the officer self-initiated side, of course, the numbers are, the highest numbers in the hundreds are the officers checking the neighborhood patrols with, especially in this warm weather with the crime concerns going on, and business checks and traffic stops. Not only for traffic violations, but for investigative stops to, if they can find the reasonable grounds to stop those vehicles, see what they're doing in those areas. And close tie to that, of course, we, we'd been avoiding the vehicle-related crimes. But over the weekend, we did have five different reportable incidents. A summary on those. The morning started with Louisville Metro recovering a vehicle that was stolen from the West Madison area, that which follows the usual trend. They enter an area, steal a vehicle easy to steal. And that's what they're using in these conveyance to get to and from their offense locations. In the Manning Place area of Spring House, unsecured vehicle was entered with some valuables removed, electronics, K-Cord.
Hey, Chief, when they, when they stole that vehicle on Madison, did they hotwire it or how'd they get it?
I don't, I'm not sure on that.
Okay.
Usually, not to advocate or advertise, but I believe it was a Kia. And everybody's probably seen the Kia and the Hyundai issues going on, which there are some preventative measures. How available they are, yet to be seen. But as, as they enter these areas, 90% of the time, they're gonna be in a Kia or a Hyundai product, which, and they've been stolen out of another jurisdiction. I found out earlier today that from some other agencies that Henry County, earlier, prior to our offenses, they were apparently up north and on their way back through, decided to make their stop in LaGrange. The other, the vehicle believed to be involved, of course, was recovered at 7:22 from our vehicle theft as well in the Shavli area. The vehicle, we had a secondary stolen vehicle, but it did not make it very far from the Harden Holly area. It was recovered just in a nearby distance, which brings me to the point. We ask our residents, please shut your garage doors, especially remove your firearms, valuables. If you've got a car in the driveway and you've got a garage door opener in it, I know it's a hassle. Yank it out of there because you're giving them instant access to your dwelling. If we just take some extra steps and if our residents, everybody's got the rings, the Arlo's, all the cameras. If you're getting alarms in the middle of the night and you know your system don't trigger, go ahead and call us first. That's why we're out there. Get an officer started. There's only so many of us and everybody's covering vast areas. There's nothing wrong with giving us a heart, a head start. You're not gonna hurt our feelings. That's what we're out here for. And most certainly, this has become problematic for all the jurisdictions. And obviously, we see them drifting in and out at a very unpredictable pattern. This one was even more unusual because our offenses were happening in the early morning hours, hours of light. You know, everybody's been used to anywhere from midnight to 5 o'clock in the morning. Some, some of these footage that we have, 6:30 in the morning. On the other notes, trackside tunes, of course, fireworks went well. Just there was one arrest at the end of the night for public intoxication as things came into conclusion. A person manifestly under the influence and custody was the option for him. We did, as mentioned in the financial part, two new patrol units were received by our agency. They're at the Upfitters with, speaking to their production team. We hope to have those on the road by the end of June if there's no delays and getting a few component parts that might be still suffering from COVID backlog for some of the prisoner partition. Yes.
You just said the end of June.
Uh, July, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't know you meant June of next year.
Yeah. Well, under the old way, that might have been true. My bad. Thank you for catching me on that. Too many dates, too many months floating. But that's still a whole lot faster than the turnaround on some of the past units. And as long as like our radar supplier that they got may hold it up a little bit. But last check-in, he did promise me probably late July, early August, we should have them on the road. In regards to our budgeted position, we're working up the proofs now to make an advertising run for the new budgeted position. We hope to do a recruit so we can get a hire and by statute, that person would be locked in to five years of service with our agency. And to coincide with that recruit hire, we'll probably run lateral advertisements again as well for our two vacancies that we still have. Anything I didn't cover or any questions or concerns?
I have a question. Do, do you guys, because I know all the officers are on different shifts. Do you guys ever get a chance to have everybody come together and have one meeting? Or is it, I know it'd be tough with all the different schedules. I didn't know if that was.
If there's a need there, we'll do it. In the past, prior to the major Goodflesh retiring, things like that, out of convenience for the officers, I'll come out and meet with that shift.
Okay.
You know, when we went through the, the different pay scales and for when that was getting ready to change over. And to answer your question, we don't do a lot of departmental meetings. Of course, there's a lot of, everybody's become accustomed to the text groups and the emails to pass along information and do, and things like that. We bring them all in at once. We're waking the late shift guys up and the, any split shift guys. It sort of breaks through. We don't have a problem doing it, but if we can avoid it and there's no need, I'd rather myself or the command staff come out and meet the guys on the hours they work.
Yeah, it makes sense. That's what I was curious about. It makes sense. Thanks.
Chief, do you have any thoughts on the new law that went into effect about ATV vehicles on the roads? That we need to change our, our ordinance?
Well, I think the, the only ordinance we have in effect is for the golf cart. And the side-by-side is a totally different beast. It'll probably, it reads or have to be enacted very similar to the golf cart, golf cart ordinance, but.
Okay. So you think we're gonna probably need to either expand, amend that one or have one similar to it?
It's gonna, like, probably the same skeleton, but some small intricacies. Of course, they'll still, I know, I know the county clerks covered it a lot. There's, it's not legal for anyone to have a side-by-side on the road right now as it currently exists. The local government unit for where you live has to legislate some sort of ordinance to make it allowable. And even when that ordinance goes into existence, that's not a magic, a magic way to get it on the road. It's gonna have to be equipped with the proper safety equipment, turn signals, horns, windshield, and pass the sheriff's office inspection for that. And then you can, that owner can bring it to the local government to operate it on the roadways here.
I had a question. I know it came up. It's, it's come up in my neighbor, in my subdivision. Is that we're like, we're basically a roadlocked subdivision at Reserve at LaSpree. And we've had some, and we have golf carts. Do we need to put our roads on that ordinance as to being okay for golf carts? But we know we can't go out on Fort Pickens.
And the original concept, and I'm, I'll speak on the enforcement and the police end. I'll sort of waiver into the government side of it.
Right.
The original intent with the golf cart ordinance was to give people alternate conveyance into the downtown district. And because of the restrictions by statute, with golf carts not being able to operate on highways with above speed limit, 25, 35, and there, we could designate safety crossing intersections. But we can't eliminate the state statute of the traveling on the state highways. So that made what we called at the time islands, island subdivisions that, and how we're gonna handle that, I believe we've talked about it in some of the ordinance. And then the, the public safety, if my thought, and it'll have to come out of the committee, is how are you gonna determine that neighborhood is gonna want golf carts traveling on the street? How many will not want it? And it may be like the speed hump situation. You may have to get a participation percentage out of that subdivision before that committee can entertainment, entertain it.
Yeah.
I'm not speaking for the public safety committee. It's not, it's not allowed currently if you're not on the accepted streets.
Okay. So even like my neighbor, who's a very kind gentleman, he's gone ahead and gotten his LaGrange City permissions and everything. But then if he's on those streets, he's still not legal.
It's not an adopted street. If he had an alternate way to get the golf cart to the downtown corridor of those accepted streets, he could operate it there.
Okay. If our homeowners association approves it.
You can drive around your subdivision.
You can drive, can you drive around your subdivision? And then that's all, I think that's all everybody really just wants.
There's a similar concern and, and I understand conversation in other subdivisions that there's no safe or allowable way for them to get into the downtown area.
Right. There is no safe.
And how, how government's gonna legislate what, what pushes people, people over the hump to go to committee or to adopt it on ordinance, that's gonna be by the people, other than me. We're stuck on the enforcement end.
I just want to make sure that, because I know of at least six or seven golf carts. And, and it's good for Halloween. I mean, because we're really stretched out quite a bit. And 4th of July and things that we do, that subdivision does as a group, because we have that park. So we bring a lot of people together in that park there in the center of our subdivision. I don't see why we can't just do it on our own. Or do we have to go through the city? That's one question I have.
Well, I think the way we did it, I recall Glen Eagle's subdivision was the same way. They were basically landlocked from getting on any highway. But we also said that was a golf course community. And a lot of folks there have golf carts.
Right.
But they have a pathway to get to Eagle Creek Golf Course.
Right.
So I want to say we'd have to pull that street allowance that we've already done thus far. But I think the streets in Eagle Creek, I felt they were added. But I remember Dr. Hazelton was up here during that time period. And it seemed like maybe we would add them, Lucy. And it seemed like to me, if you all want to ride golf carts in there, the kids, the people have to be of adult age, have a driver's license. You just can't let kids get on and start running around the neighborhood. So I think this city would probably more than, more than likely add it to our list of permissible streets to be used with golf carts.
And I know in the social media world, that may not be a clear understanding of some of the narratives floating around there. Just because you get put on the golf cart ordinance and are allowed, they're your allowed street, that does not allow underage individuals to operate a golf cart.
So that needs to be made very clear to everybody. Okay. I'll probably get with you to get some of those, some of that information so I can put it out there on our, on our web.
And in the reference the mayor just made to golf, golf cart, golf course communities, there's even, there's references to golf, golf course communities in the statute as well.
And we're not though.
And I just wanted to add on that, that we did pass an ordinance several years ago for golf court, golf carts. And along with adding the street onto that, the golf cart has to be inspected by the Sheriff's Department. And it has to be permitted by the City of LaGrange, which is a free permit before it can operate on the city street. And along those same lines with the permit is the rules. It has to be a licensed driver. So kids can't be driving the golf carts. I mean, the same, all the rules apply.
All right.
If you get a license that forces the people to hear the, hear the words, you cannot let a minor ride this golf.
Correct. Correct. And I have those packets. I mean, I can show you. I can give you the packet so you can see what the rules are. But that we make them sign off that they understand these are the rules. So that when they get their permit, they know what the rules are for the golf cart.
I'm sure my neighbor got that. So.
And Lucy, well, that's basically what I'm gonna talk about in the, in the committee reports. Is because that's basically what we discussed. Because I've been getting emails and John's forwarded me the emails that he's gotten. But I think that in, in the chief and I and the committees talked about that. But you know, the problem that your subdivision has is kind of like other subdivisions that are landlocked by state highways.
Right.
But if you want to, if you want to proceed with like your subdivision, then we would have to bring that into, into that ordinance. But you're still gonna be landlocked. You're just gonna be able to write it in your subdivision.
Right. And, and follow the rules that.
Absolutely. Yeah, you gotta follow the rules. You gotta be of age. That, that's, that's okay. But just know that you're not gonna be able to come up, you know, Fort Pickens and cut down through LaGrange. Like, and that's what some of these people have asked. You know, they want to drive all the way to the city.
No, you can't do that.
You just can't do it based on the state highways that we've got.
Okay.
What, how many golf carts have we actually inspected and permitted they're operating on?
I believe we're at six. So I know there's a lot of them that drive around that are not. I believe we're at six. So I know there's a lot of them that drive around that are not permitted.
Seen them.
And, and we get calls, I hear the calls come out on the police radio of kids driving golf carts around neighborhoods, so.
That is the, the bulk of the complaint may not be necessarily adults operating golf carts. It's, it's the juveniles getting out and adult carts and, and that's, I mean, get a low speed vehicle and it's not gonna be a good outcome. Not only if it has a collision with a passenger vehicle or a truck, but I don't know if you read some of the headlines in tourist areas of people losing their grip and usually results in a pretty traumatic head injury. You get thrown from one of those around in a curve, so, you know, those are things to consider in the operation. But that's, I wanted Stephanie, even though with a golf cart ordinance has been around for two or three years, we thought it was maybe gonna be a huge influx of permitted carts.
I can get a copy of that and then put it out there on.
And I'll email you the current ordinance and the statute so you have it in hand.
In the map.
Yes, and see how it works from there.
Okay. I didn't mean to take your thunder there.
Oh, you're, sure. I'm just gonna check my name off the list now.
Only other thing, chief, is I sent you an email late today, you and Stephanie Winter on Latasha's issue about a fireworks situation the other night. You should have got that email. So, well, if you didn't, I'll resend it.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'll talk to you tomorrow about it.
Yes, sir.
And I just want you all, then if anything needs to be done, otherwise we need to push that on to the ordinance committee as well because we had some dangerous fireworks situations going on in the city the other night.
Okay, thank you.
With some neighbors, neighborly people. Okay, thank you, chief. Um, okay, thank you all. Standing committee reports. First up tonight is Mr. Trey Kamler.
Thank you. Uh, we met on June 12th and the committee did, uh, just had a little bit of introduction. If there's any issues, suggestions, compliments, uh, just share them with me and I'll make sure that the committee hears them and that we go over them with the mayor and the parks director. We also had some discussion over the parks director position, assistant director labor one, just reviewing the role and responsibilities, um, then making a recommendation to the personnel and insurance board or committee, um, for their review. We did talk about some, uh, some lighting in between, um, 309 West Main and the Perkinson property. We have some light options that were available. Corey has since then put in a light, um, in that sidewalk. Yeah, so it's, it's lit up that area. Um, so we covered that. We're still working on our plan of action for that Perkinson property, uh, to, to be eventually made to the full council. So that's still a work in progress. Um, I did report that we had, um, with Christian, I met with him and we evaluated the skate park, basketball court, and I showed him an area where maybe an amphitheater could go. So what we kinda covered in that was here's some immediate needs, here's maybe six month, you know, out kinda need. And then here's a year to three year kinda need. Uh, we didn't get to dive into it in the committee because we just ran out of time, but, um, you know, at our next meeting, I'd like to continue to cover that and then do that for all the parks. Um, you know, I, I know one of the bigger challenges we've had through the summer is just getting some stability. You know, when Stephen left and then Christian transitioned and, and now with Steve, you know, hopefully we've got some stability here and we'll be able to really start to tackle some more stuff. And that was the end of our meeting. So, uh, we meet on Wednesday, this upcoming Wednesday, five AM or five PM. Uh, sorry, I'm getting tired. Five PM. Um, so if that's still good with the committee members, this Wednesday. So good? All right, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Trey. Jason Kinser, economic committee.
So the economic, uh, committee meeting, uh, the last one we had, we had, uh, myself, Kenneth and Trey, and then mayor attended, uh, Joe was there as well, and then Stephanie Winter also. Uh, one of the things we discussed is from going to the, uh, summer training for KLC, uh, the Babbage Foundation. Kentucky has a $200 million fund, uh, to match federal grants. Uh, and one of the, uh, one of the things that, uh, I would like to look into that we talked about is, uh, people walking across the 71 bridges. You know, I'm sure you all see them all the time as I do too. And it, it, it just scares the heck out of me, them walking that close to traffic and that they're gonna get hit. So, um, I wanted to see if Kipta, if we can get with Kipta, um, and, uh, see about putting some type of walkway, maybe attached to what's there or whatever, but for being a federal highway, uh, and then state, uh, road 53, it's gonna take a lot of coordination, but I think it's something, uh, worth doing. So mayor's gonna talk to the Babbage Foundation, is that right, mayor?
Who?
The, you were gonna talk to the lady and have her come to the next, uh, come to the next committee meeting.
When is your next meeting?
Uh, July 10th at 6:00 PM. So very soon. Three days from now. Um, so the current overpasses, uh, need to be replaced at some point. So anyway, uh, that's something that we were looking at. Talked to Sherry also, uh, at the summer meeting, uh, from, uh, Clark Deets about, um, looking into doing, uh, parking garage, um, so that we have, uh, some spots, uh, downtown area. There's, uh, money left over from the courthouse project that, um, that we could look into possibly using toward that. Uh, so we discussed some different spots for, uh, for doing a parking garage. Uh, it would need to be near the courthouse. And then, uh, what else we discussed, the EDC, which we got that rocking and rolling. Uh, I think that's about it. We kinda looked at some different places, uh, and things that we, uh, talked about with the parking garage and then, um, uh, what other buildings and areas and things we might wanna look at uh, for future economic development and community growth, uh, in downtown area and around there. So anyway, I think it was good. We're, we're getting some, uh, some good things and kinda some big things we're, we're looking into doing, so. There you go.
As far as, as far as economics and you all were talking about, what was that name that car that jumped over that statue at Sunset?
General Lee.
General Lee. I just thought something we could do, I think would draw a big crowd to La Grange. If we got a tight wire artist and he walked on a tight wire across Main Street from one building to the other. You think we could do that, pull that off?
That'd be cool.
And see if he would get up there and actually bounce his way across Main Street, across road tracks. And it might be some sort of entertaining that somebody would actually be willing to do that, that's in that business, you know?
That'd be cool.
So, you know, you never know. Okay, thank you, Jason, for that report.
Thank you.
Uh, I just got a text from the lady with the Babbage Company. She will be here on the 10th. I just texted her and she said she's got it on her docket. We met, um, where'd we meet that group up, the conference? Where was that? Conference in Lexington, yeah. Yeah, so sat with Bob Babbage and he's got a, almost a lobbying firm or what it is, but they suppose he can get us some money. So we've got them coming to the economic development meeting or economic meeting on the 10th. She just told me she's be here. Okay, uh, see, we're, we're with the ordinance and code enforcement, Laura Taylor.
We, uh, met, uh, last week, uh, for ordinance committee. We discussed the, um, entertainment, entertainers, business license exemption, as we've already discussed earlier in the meeting. We, uh, made some really good progress on the parking ordinance, um, had some good discussions relating to that. We're not quite ready to, um, have a first reading on that, but we're, we're getting closer. Also, we made some good progress on revising the sign ordinance. Um, there's still more to do on that one. And of course, any interested parties are always welcome to attend ordinance committee if they have anything that they would like to, um, suggest or have input on to, um, they're welcome to come. And finally, we did bring up the ethics code, which, um, is in the process of being, uh, updated. And ordinance committee is going to be reviewing that before it will be presented formally, uh, at the, at a city council meeting.
Great. For all your things you've done and what you get, you have coming up.
Thank you.
Don't know if we need to, uh, we talked about a few ordinances need to get to you all soon. So we'll figure out what those are and try to get them on to the ordinance committee. Okay, uh, roles, public safety, police, environmental. Kenneth Pousland gives a report on each of those.
Yep, we, um, we met on the 12th, uh, myself, Jason and, uh, Corey, chief, Joe and Trey were there. We talked about a few stormwater issues, uh, some culverts and as well as the sewer project as far as notice found some residents, uh, what they're doing on Third Street. Uh, the majority of the conversations regarded the golf court, the golf carts, uh, just because it seems to be a hot topic, you know? Now weather's nice and people are wondering if ride those, their golf carts around. So I'd say that was, that's probably the, the majority of what we discussed, uh, just because of situations like Lucy has. And then, uh, uh, the lady, I can't, I can't remember her name right now, uh, had emailed me from back in Spring House regarding the same thing. And, you know, the main issues are, like chief said, you know, we've got state highways that are kinda landlocked and, and where you can come through the town. Um, you know, there's a possibility of doing that within your subdivision and, and setting those guidelines, but that would be something that we would have to add to the map, obviously. So, uh, that's basically, uh, what we discussed mostly was, uh, just some stormwater issues and then those golf cart, uh, situations.
All right. Thank you, Kenneth. Appreciate that. Uh, next, next item is another open public comment. Anyone here still wishing to speak in public comment time? No, I don't see anyone. Okay. Uh, 16 open discussion related to any or old or new business by the city council. Anybody have anything?
No, I just was gonna talk about that firework thing that we just, I just wanted, Laura, did you get my email?
I did, yes.
And I just wanted to make sure I mentioned it because she did call and she wanted to mention publicly about not using the fireworks properly in her neighborhood. And it was very dangerous and there's a video that's attached. I have to text it to you because I can't figure out how to send an email. That's how she sent it to me. But I did wanna let her know that we are working on that.
Okay, I'll put it on the agenda to review that.
Yes, we will.
Okay, um, announcements by anyone? We do see, you do see that we do have a special call, city council meeting on July 17th at 2025 6:00 PM at city hall. It's, uh, will be the second reading. We've already had a first reading, public hearing of ordinance number 11, 2025, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of La Grange. And that's in reference to, um, I think it's Billy Delker who wants, I think they have purchased or may, no, contentiately will purchase the old MSD building down here on Dawkins Road. And they would like to, uh, take that building down and put one more, um, apartment building on that particular parcel. So that's what this will be about. Bishop Place Apartments.
You know, those are us that's been around, the old.
Health Department.
Health Department, yes, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, behind the funeral home, or to the side of the funeral.
Mayor, we, uh, I think I'd emailed you earlier this week about being out of town. Is it, how they're gonna be able to get a Zoom link on that?
Yes, sir. We're gonna make sure and, and Steve Mahoney will get that going for our July 17th meeting, Jason. And to be a voting member, we just, we just have to see your faces, okay, on that, on that Zoom.
Yeah, we'll, we'll check our schedule.
Make sure you're not out in the middle of the ocean or anywhere, or unless you are, you're welcome to be out there. But in order to be a participant, you gotta show your faces.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Um, okay, any, any other business, folks?
Yeah, just an announcement, uh, so, uh, just with the baseball with North Oldham Little League. So several of the North Oldham teams won their districts and are moving on to state. So we got a really good representation from, uh, from our local baseball. So I think that's pretty cool.
Great. Are you a coach?
Uh, I, yeah, I was assistant coach and, uh, for ours, we could only go to so far in the district. And so we won our district. So that was, that's pretty cool.
Yes, sir.
I have one more thing.
Or sir.
I have a question. For Oldham County Day, what is the city planning on doing and do you need, uh, members?
Yes, if you wish to. Latasha's already asked, but we will have, I think, two cities booth or tents at the corner of Main and 53. I know Patrick Shuddy with Public Works, he's gonna be doing his snow cones again. You all can just come and, you know, if you wanna wear any of your city apparel or anything, you can just be there meeting people and talking about city matters and, uh, entertaining. You won't have to pay a license fee to entertain. Just, 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 just do what you wanna do to talk to people and that's what it'll be. As far as the parade goes, everybody's allowed to be in the parade. If you wanna have your own car, your own tractor, you're welcome to be in there. I, I, I think I will be in there. I believe I will. So, um, I guess I've been in a parade for, I don't know how many years, but the thing about, the thing about being in the parade, you never get to see the parade. That's the bad thing about being in the parade. You don't see, because I understand the parades are really good, but I don't think I've ever seen one. Uh, so anyway, that and, uh, is there anything else anybody like to bring up now?
Mayor, just, uh, for planning purposes, I know the next meeting's August 4th, regular meeting.
Yes, sir.
Labor Day is September 1st. It's Monday. There's nothing on the calendar that says anything about when our actual meeting will be. Will that be September 2nd? Is, is there some other date or?
Is, is that a Monday?
Labor Day, Monday.
We always do that meeting on the following Tuesday.
So it'll be September 2nd?
Yes, sir.
Just for the record. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. You're welcome. Okay, if, um, that's it, folks.
Motion to adjourn.
Made by Joe.
Second.
Second by Lucy Ricketson. Everybody's in favor. All say aye.
Thank you.